Mary Lee.
Mary Lee's probably.
She hit the parking lot and said, seal it.
Oh, right.
She's outside.
She thought there was Stephanie, I think.
She thought there was Stephanie and Suzanne, I think. Like, outside. It wasn't when I got here.
Yeah, it wasn't when I got here, did it?
Oh, it was unlocked when I got here.
Okay.
Yeah. They just may not know that we're in here now. Sorry.
You want me to type a text?
Call us to order. We have Corin.
Yeah.
Before.
Seven oh seven.
Yeah, so I'll call the Region Nine Board of Education Regular Meeting to order at seven oh eight, seven oh seven, sorry, seven oh seven PM. And the first item on the agenda, item two, consent agenda for approval of minutes from the May twenty one, twenty twenty four, Region Nine Board of Education Regular Meeting, and item two, approval of minutes from the May twenty eight, twenty twenty four, Eastern Reading, Region Nine Joint Boards of Education Meeting. So unless anyone has any changes.
Yeah.
We deem the minutes approved and move forward.
Yeah.
All right. And the minutes are approved, and we move on to item three, public comment.
We're just, I'm upstanding on the twenty.
On which one?
There's no vote.
It's a consent agenda.
You don't need to document.
It's not consent.
It's just absent objection.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
We, we don't get out of it until we all agree that we don't have any corrections. Yeah.
All right. So then, public comment. The members of the public move on from there. Board member comment, item four. All right. Then we will move on to item five. As soon as the administration will return. Administrative reports.
Okay, Dr. Ameida, I believe, is doing the noteworthy news.
Yes, I am. Good evening. Congratulations to Anand Kanar and Rowan O'Connor for their selection and recognition under the Western Connecticut Superintendent Association Student Awards. Each W C at member districts selects two high school students based on criteria. Service, service to others, academic prowess, responsibility, leadership services to the community. Congratulations to both. Ian Lent, one of our grade twelve students who graduated, yes, he was the one with grade twelve student, was named the Academic All-American Team for Boys lacrosse. This is a huge honor and testament to Ian's hard work on the field. Our Barlow's E M T honors medical students had a great showing at the sports. EMS Olympics hosted by Bethel High School in Tolbert. And, no, I'm sorry, I apologize, early in June, out of forty seven competitors, several students took silver, winning the highest individual scores, plus many other students. Eighteenth Annual Barlow Palooza was a huge success a couple of weeks ago. Great to see the output of community support. I'd like to recognize all the artists, musicians, alumni presenters, the robotics demonstration, youth mental first aid, and the different Barlow groups and clubs, as well as the staff and volunteers who helped make this great event. Theater Department intended to perform at the Halo Award Ceremony in May twenty eight, twenty twenty four, which is like the Tony Awards for high school theater in Connecticut. Our students were renowned for thirteen awards and won Halo for Best Running Crew. It's been eleven years since Joe Barlow has participated in Halos and won an award. I would say summarize most of the important news.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ameida, and there are other items on the agenda that we can participate in discussion. I would just like to say thank you and congratulations to our graduates. Our ceremony last evening was beautiful. And if you have not seen the pitches, you can find them on Instagram. Here are some, some pre-pitches up here. Here's the, the moment that we captured with the beautiful sunbeam. That's not edited. That is exactly how it appeared. And just some really happy students and family members.
Those are photos you took?
These are, yep, these are photos that we, that I took.
Excellent.
Yeah. After the event, and then you can, let me see, then you could even see this. Maybe not here. Wait, hold on. This is one of our students, Phoebe. So, thank you to everyone, thank you to our families, our amazing staff, our leaders and our administrators, and to all of you for being there. It was just a spectacular night, and you don't get to the end without a lot of hard work, and with just some incredible students. So, I know you, there's probably more to say about that, but that captures administrative reports.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to committee reports. Item six.
I apologize. It was my word. Sorry, I apologize.
I'm quite ready to move on.
I was just, I was asked to just recognize some of our retired research.
Yes.
We're to take a moment. We had four certified staff members, two of whom both of you that were there last night got to hear and see the recognition. We had Paula Panos, who has worked for forty years, over forty years, as director of school counseling here at Barlow. We also honored Diana Lavoie, a special education teacher, two other teachers who were not there yesterday, but again, have decided to retire Barbara Powell, our social studies, a social studies teacher, and also Barbara Smith, our Latin teacher. We also like to recognize two non-certified staff, Melody Jarvis in the Writing Center, and also Kathy McGrath, who's a secretary for the Humanities Department, so we thank them for their many years of service, and we wish them nothing but the best in their next chapters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for reading those names out, and we do want to thank them again for all their years of service and everything they've contributed to the school and our community and our students over the years. Thank you, and wish them the best in retirement as well. Then we'll move on to committee reports.
Briefly, for curriculum committee met on June fifth, had a great conversation on a number of topics, really full agenda that we sort of powered through thanks to the sort of great preparation from Dr. Ameida, as well as Dr. Chris Yugal and Jason, Dr. McKinnon. I think, you know, we touched on a number of subjects which I won't drill into in detail, but a couple that are worth calling out. So, you know, talked about graduation requirements, talked about curriculum pathways, and some of the demonstrations done on some of the topics that we had raised. I think we highlighted something like twenty-five different topics that we weren't trying to bite off all at once, but that we knew that we wanted to get to eventually. A couple of the topics that we did a sort of deeper dive on. So, world language requirements, we had a really great conversation about world language requirements. I think, you know, we were working under the assumption in coming into the meeting, the narrative had been Latin is dead, and that it's, it's just not, you know, it doesn't have the enrollment, and it, you know, and it's like, we can't find a teacher for it, and it's just like, oh, no, we're never gonna get there. Part of the conversation that we had is we examined sort of what other districts are doing, as we examined the sort of the current enrollment, and actually, the uptick that we've seen in the enrollment over the last couple of years, is the possibility of, you know, maybe there's some strategy that we can employ that will allow us to sort of still support Latin, and maybe it's, you know, Latin plus Italian, or Latin plus Mandarin, or something else like that. And so, we sort of had a conversation, the administration walked away with an intent of, let's go try our hand, you know, if we post for this, if we're looking for, you know, Latin plus something else, what's out there? And so, I think, you know, we were really sort of gratified that there was a sort of attitude amongst the administration to say, hey, maybe there is something that we can do with Latin, and I think we're eager to hear sort of any status that's going on with that. In addition to that, we did a deep dive on the topic of weighted grading. And I think there was a recommendation coming out of the committee to the policy committee. There was a tremendous amount of work that Dr. Ameida did to actually understand all of the sort of surrounding districts, and sort of what they're doing, so, you know, whether it's Darien, New Canaan, Ridgefield West, and Westport, Newtown, Brookfield, New Fairfield, Wilton, really sort of went out there and understood, like, hey, is it enshrined in policy? Is it enshrined in their program of study? Do they do an A-plus option? Do they do an honors and AP sort of differentiation, and sort of what does that all look like? And then any nuances that might exist in any one of those, you know, programs where it's like, oh, yeah, they do an AP, and they do an honors sort of differentiated weighting, where it's like honors is point six, seven, or honors is point three, three, and AP is plus one, or plus six, seven, depending. So, there's a really sort of mix, an array of solutions that various districts have come up with, but none of them do what we do, which is the, you know, A plus B only, and sort of not giving any sort of extra sort of credit to students who attempt a difficult class and, you know, achieve a C, or, you know, don't achieve that A or B, sort of giving them the opportunity to still get that. And so, it was the recommendation out of that committee to the policy committee to evaluate the sort of removal of our, you know, sort of, this is only for people who get As and Bs. So, I think we're, we're prepared to have a sort of deeper discussion about that, but I think, you know, I just, thanks to Dr. Ameida, to having done all of that work to really understand sort of what's what in the world around us, and what the facts are of that. I think that's it for the curriculum committee for now.
I have a question on one of the things that you mentioned, on the language, the Latin plus. That's a very interesting concept.
Yeah.
We've been around and around, and like Todd, you know, Gwen can remember this.
Oh, yeah.
I think we can remember some of this, where we've talked about this, and there was no consensus on the last, with, among the last two, the last two boards.
Yeah.
As to how we deal with this, right? And, and we've historically talked about, even now talk about, a mix of different things. But I guess the committee, I just want to understand the committee's current discussion, why Latin plus something else? Why not Japanese plus something else? And then, and then the discussion around the virtual lang, like, why virtual lang is an option for every other language that we don't cover, that, which is Spanish and French, but yet for Latin, we have to have this kind of special carve-out, where we have to spend more time, which, at the end of the day, I would challenge future populations of students that maybe there'll be more students that want to take German versus Latin. Like, so how do we balance that as a board and make the right decision based on, you know, what is current, what's modern, what is more relevant, and not just directly linked to only romance European languages, right? Why not Asian? Why not, you know, South American, right? What, what makes Latin so special as linked to romance language?
Yeah, and I, and I think, and certainly would invite our sort of administrators to opine on this as well. I think the discussion that we had in the last meeting about that topic in particular is that if Latin was not being taught by a teacher, then it would be a good candidate for that virtual opportunity.
Yep.
But I think, you know, we have a cohort of almost thirty kids who are sort of one foot in Latin, and, and, you know, I think there's a sense of loss of sort of not being able to attract a teacher to sort of be in that space. I think there is an appetite for Latin as well. There may be an appetite for Japanese. I know there's actually, it's actually a really popular language right now amongst, my kids did three years of it, you know, during the pandemic and loved it. But, you know, Mandarin, Italian, I think there'd be a huge appetite for Italian. But I think, so where we left the conversation was, you know, we have Spanish, we have French, we have Latin, is that, is it truly, like, unsupportable? Or have we simply been making an assumption that it's unsupportable because we, you know, can't attract someone? Or like, is there a different way that we could go out and looking for that? And so, that was the genesis of, like, is this a creative way that we could go out looking for someone? We also talked briefly about, and I don't want to get anyone stirred up, but is, if Weston, or Wilton, or, you know, some other neighboring school district has a Latin teacher at a, you know, at a point four, and we could chip in for a point four, would that make it easier for us to combine, attract somebody, and could we share even across districts to make our lives really hard, you know, coordinating across multiple districts? So, we talked about a lot of those things. I think that the administration was gonna go away to say, like, hey, let's take another crack at this, and I don't know if they have updates tonight, but I think, you know, we're, I think we're all sort of curious as to, like, what is available.
At the risk of going even deeper onto this, this topic, just one other thing that came out of the committee, Cheryl, was the administration took the position, they were going to survey current and future Barlow students as to areas of interest for additional foreign languages. So, to the extent that German rose to the top, that would create a certain priority, for example. And also, what was somewhat of a surprise to me was, in all of the districts surveyed, top to bottom, Dergay offers Latin.
Yep.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah, that was actually really surprising to me. That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Other committee reports?
Finance and Operations in the building met, and did recommend, the Finance and Operations Committee, in the building committee, well, let's say the Finance and Operations Committee discussed, took a look at the capital plan, and then had an executive session to discuss some security enhancements. After the executive session, there was an action, or there was an action in executive session to add a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for security enhancements to a updated potential capital plan that then Finance and Operations voted to recommend that the full board adopt the new capital plan. Also, in the, before the executive session, there was a desire amongst the committee to meet possibly over the summer, or, you know, during one of Jason's many non-busy times, and Sarah's non-busy times, and Mike's non-busy times, and, and do a sort of a more comprehensive survey of the building, and determine what our most pressing needs are, or our needs in general are, and to really shake out the capital plan and make sure that we're covering all of our future, our foreseeable major expenses. But we did not have time to do all of that this evening. So, we did some updates and added the recommended security enhancements, and restroom upgrades, and some fixes to the facade, which we can discuss, is that later on on this agenda?
It's gonna be added, yeah.
Okay. So, that's the general's gist.
Any questions? All right.
Just since we're pretty much all here.
You said that money was added in executive session?
No, there's a recommendation.
It was a recommendation. The, all we do is vote to recommend to the full board that they adopt.
Right, in your comment, you said during executive session, we added a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in security.
Oh, sorry, after the executive session, I apologize.
I just want to make clear for anybody listening.
Yes, based on discussions that happened in executive session. Thank you. Afterwards, there was, there was an addition, and this is a proposed update to the capital plan that the entire board will have a chance to take a look at.
So, outside of these questions?
I mean, this is outside of the purview of, of those discussions, so feel free to say, like, hey, that's something else. I have a distinct memory, in the, in the last couple of meetings, we talked about painting that's going on at the school this summer, and I thought it was painting of the hallways. Is that not the case?
We did not discuss painting this evening.
Do you have a memory of that? Jason, I thought, I thought you had mentioned something in one of the meetings, but.
We, as a, we discussed at the last board meeting, possible end-of-year.
I see.
Projects.
That's what it was.
And one was a facade, which could have been painting, but I think we also put painting in as a general category, as a possible way to spend some money.
That wasn't, yeah, I don't think that was making capital.
I don't think it was on the cap.
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah, thank you.
General operating, got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Scuffed walls, that's all I have at the moment.
Very good. All right.
Policy committee.
That on Thursday, we'll talk about in a few minutes.
Perfect. All right, any other committee? I think that's all the committees, we only have like three now, so it's a lot faster there. All right, then we'll move on to item seven, discussion possible action. And the first thing I'd like to do is make change to the agenda items in here. So, I'll look for a motion to add a capital plan to, as item A, move everything else down, and then add food services contract as the last item, which would be a new.
G.
H, actually, so we'll move everything down. We'll add capital plan as an A.
Okay.
We make it A one and A two, so everything else doesn't have to get relabeled.
That works great.
I'm good either way, because I'm just capital plans at the beginning.
I'm looking out for passing. Instead of shifting.
A one and A two.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, all right, so we'll do A one as.
Plus G.
Yes. Yes, A one is capital plan, and A one, two is financial, or sorry, but we need food services, I think, at the end. So, I don't know if that's gonna help.
That's easy, right? Because it doesn't, that becomes F now, right?
Oh, G.
G, it becomes G now.
A one and A two, then B, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to add food service contract as G.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Passes. And then, we need capital plan as either A, I guess as A one, added.
Is it proposed as discussion or adoption?
It will be both, probably, discussion and adoption. Got you. Potential adoption. All right, so Karen?
I'll second. Cheryl?
All right, so all in favor for adding discussion and possible adoption of the capital plan as a new item A one? Opposed? One opposed, okay.
While we're doing agendas, I'll make a motion to strike item C from the agenda, as that investment statement was still not circulated to the board.
I believe it was sent out.
It's six twenty PM.
I guess, I thought it went last time after the meeting.
I believe that it did not go after the meeting. I just sent it to you and Jason and Chris for.
It certainly wasn't in the materials, so.
Yeah, but, all right, apologize, I thought it went out after the last meeting where we had this same problem. All right, so we will.
I guess there needs to be a motion, it would be a request to table it.
Yeah, we'll just table that. Again, in August.
I apologize for that.
I apologize.
All right, so, just to be clear now, we have A one is capital plan, A two, financial year-end update, B is policy, C is tabled, D is NAST, F, formation of STEM.
That was E.
Or E, sorry, E, formation of STEM, F, recognition of the retirement, and then G, food services. Okay. All right, very good. All right, so we'll start. Capital plan, A one. So, I don't know if Gwen will bring this as part of the F and O discussion. Mike and Jason having?
Sure. So, we discussed, I think, I want to say at our last meeting, but it's the end of June, so probably at our last meeting. I think this, the capital plan is definitely in need of a little bit of shaking out, but this evening, we were able to add certainly the facade, which we will. The facade at the front of this building, which needs, which needs to be repaired. Security enhancements, and what else did we add? Restroom restoration, we have a little bit better idea of what that's gonna cost, so we can discuss how we want to tackle that project. Really need to get to all of those. So, yeah, if anyone has questions, the items in red are the new items, and the items that are stricken through are the items that are completed.
Do I need other discussion or clarity on any of them? And again, we'll continue to revise the capital plan. So, everything on here is not set in stone, but we wanted to start making an attempt to get some more items on.
We should explain that the items, the restroom restoration is possibly, is probably gonna be a phased, you know, plan, because it's so expensive, but that's an estimate per bathroom.
That is an estimate per bathroom, and for, I mean, I think that we've got to look into how much money we can save as far as an economy of scale, purchasing things together, but practically speaking, I suspect that it's not going to be feasible to do all the bathrooms at once, because then there's no place to go to the bathroom. So, I suspect it will end up not only being spread out over a few years to make the cost more manageable, but also you could, you could sort of do one way at a time and spread the cost over three years or something like that. Seems like a reasonable approach to me.
Yeah. Bathrooms need to be done really in the summer or over a.
Yeah.
Vacation break or something.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that F and O should, should have a more in-depth meeting to discuss what the best plan of attack is, but I suspect that larger bathrooms would need to be done, and we could probably get a good chunk done over a summer break, but maybe if there are a couple of small bathrooms, maybe they could get knocked out over a, of a long school break, and just sort of plan it out, and talk to administration about what their preferences are for what gets done first, and maybe even have a bathroom tour.
We don't have to.
And we'll take administration's word for that.
Just a few photos would suffice.
Eight seventy should be nine sixty, shouldn't it? Sixty times sixteen?
The math isn't right.
I know, it still isn't math.
Yeah, I was looking at them like.
They're not all exactly the same.
They're not all the same price, so I'm at roughly sixty.
So, we're saying eight seventy is about right. Okay. Cool.
I could do it today.
Right, exactly.
Which is kind of pointless to.
So, it's just to give us an idea, really, in my mind, this is to give us an idea of the magnitude of it, and it's, the magnitude is large. Because again, if we do some of them next summer, and we do some of them in the summer of twenty twenty seven, the ones in twenty twenty seven are gonna be more.
Yeah, right.
So, I would ask again, the F and O committee, as you mentioned, maybe meet over the summer at their next meeting in August, whenever, yeah, in August, that we go back through this list, because again, we put items on here that don't actually have a calendar year when we're gonna do those, so to help with planning and budgeting for future.
Absolutely.
And there are probably other items on there. I know we did discuss, like, auditorium restoration, what's all included in that? And I think Mike said, you know, there's some building walkthrough of some other items that need to get added, so I would like us to start out, you know, with a little better plan.
Now, is the expectation or the alignment among the board members to ask the administration, because I, Mike alluded to this at the, at the committee meeting, that he could do a walk and assessment of the entire building and say, okay, if we could fund this over multiple years, what, what is, what are, what does the administration feel we need to get done over the course of time, right? And that, I think there was some unanimity, I think, among the committee members that, let's just make this a list, knowing that we're not gonna be able to fund it in any given year, could take us years to do this, much like the old legacy list that we had the last two boards, so I kind of just wanted to tee that up. We did talk about that.
Right.
For the rest of the board members who weren't there.
At least knowing.
It tends to be holistic.
Yeah, I think I see it a little bit differently, Cheryl. I think that an inventory is incredibly important, and absent from this, and I think Suzanne's comments in the committee meeting were all taken.
Yeah.
We have lockers, and bathrooms, and windows, and roofs, and paving, and tennis courts, and field turf, and all these things that have a lifespan. And while somewhere, we may collectively be able to piece together, the parking lot is eighteen years old, the tennis courts are two years old and all that, it doesn't live in one document like this. And the capital plan here, and in my experience at Reading, have sort of similar problems, which is, we get obsessed with, what's it gonna cost, and when are we gonna do it? And the capital plan here, and in my experience at Reading, have sort of run into sort of similar problems, which is we get obsessed with what's it gonna cost and when are we gonna do it? And it becomes instead of a punch list of near-term, mid-sized capital plans, as opposed to a guiding document for when things are gonna need to be replaced and how. We're, I, I expect that three years from now, somebody will wake up and say the carpeting in here needs to be replaced, let's edit the capital plan for right now, because it's worn out.
Yeah.
Instead of saying carpet has an eight to twelve-year lifespan, we did it in two thousand and ten, therefore in twenty twenty two, it should be due. And then you can look at things without even putting price tags on them, because there's no point in saying what's carpeting gonna cost in ten years. That's, I think it's a, a waste of Mike's time to spend the summer saying, if I replace the whole building, what would it cost? Because that's, that's a fiction. But if we said, here are the things, and we know that this is gonna take ten years to replace, so we can project twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-five, we're talking about these things. And if we had it as a philosophy to have a complete inventory with the lifespan of these items, and then had it be a practice that once we get within a three-year window, we start getting pricing. And we say, now it's gonna be with, they're gonna have to be replaced in three years, what's it all gonna cost? Now we're doing a three-year numbers review on a rolling basis, as opposed to kind of a punch-listy thing here. Because I feel like every meeting that I've come to in the past six months, there's been, oh, by the way, I also wanna replace a door, and I wanna replace this, I wanna replace that. That is break fixes more than capital planning, and I'd love to move into a, here's the inventory, here's its useful lifespan, how are we gonna? There's a depreciation piece of it on the financial side, but there's a practical piece of it on the future planning side. And that includes the comment that was made in the meeting about how, there was discussion about putting aside fifty-three thousand dollars a year to replace the field turf when it, when it comes due. And the decision was made not to do that, just bond for it later, or to borrow for it later, or take it out of capital non-recurring later. That decision was made when interest rates were three, we're gonna stare at a, a replacement where interest rates could be double that. And there, there might be some, some regret about not putting that aside. And so, we'll wanna think about all of these philosophically, about how we're doing it, but we can't do that until we have a complete inventory and understanding what's coming.
Just a quick note on that, before we just go around. Mike and Sarah have a complete plan on that, developing a website that is gonna be very similar to Strategic Plan, they've actually started that project. It's very exciting, and I think we can work on that over the summer.
So then going back to the timetable, what we want the F and O committee to do, is it to look at that? Because I'm thinking strategically, this is just a mechanism for me.
We would like to develop the website and the tool first, then bring it to you.
So then what would that timing be, is it the August, or do, do we need more time? And I'm not, I don't mean to be putting anybody on the spot, but I don't wanna call an F and O meeting two days before we have it and we're not ready. Let's do it in the right way, not rush it, right? Because we're not, there's nothing we're chasing per se, we just wanna have a multi-year view of what we wanna potentially fund, or go to taxpayers to fund and when.
We have a pretty nice-looking draft.
Good start.
Yeah.
So.
Let's say August.
So let's say August.
Twenty twenty-four.
But it'll be tied to the depreciation schedules that now we have available in the.
That is correct.
Hold your breath, don't, don't blink.
I might keep those separate, Todd, for meetings, but yes, the, there will be a correlation for sure, I'll do a through path.
They'll help, they'll inform each other.
Yes.
So I find that really encouraging, I, I've never been involved with anything that was meaningful and like, got real work done, that didn't start with an inventory, because you can't prioritize until you inventory. If this website, if the intent is, hey, public, we are being transparent about, here's everything that we need to be thinking about, and kind of the current health meter for it. Like, it's X of Y years, the, I think that's fabulous, I think we could apply the same thing to the inventory we did for the curriculum committee.
What's living on borrowed time and what's recently refreshed.
What, what needs to be refreshed, like, and, and not just a function of what, what books need to be updated, but also sort of, you know, what, what are our priorities and sort of where are we at in our list?
And it's, it's not just region nine, it's Eastern Reading and region nine into different domains.
It's amazing.
It looks nice.
So I think you were close. The, the red are, is the new stuff you've added to the plan, for the purposes of tonight, would probably suffice to get to the next agenda, general item, which is really end of year. And we'll come back to this capital plan.
Yeah, so I think since the committee has made updates, adding the red, then the full board, we should have a motion to adopt this as the new capital plan, with these revisions for now, and then we can revise it again August or September after we get the new ones. But at least these items could be approved on the capital plan for capital spending, if we go there next, in the next agenda.
Can we rename the file?
Yes, it needs to have the.
I just noticed that, yeah.
I added a tab down at the bottom, so that there could be a draft, and then it's, that's when the, so as soon as you approve it, the, my thought was that then we would. It'll, it, not that it links up to the website or anything.
No longer be as, the file name would be, capital plan, and each tab would be an iteration.
Bingo.
So for the motion, what?
So we need a motion to approve the capital plan, these items.
As presented.
As presented.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Now, what's the benefit of, of approving it now, is that because the last time we did it was, was eight twenty-two, twenty-three? And we kinda need a more current version that's formally approved, or like, what's the point, if, if we're gonna talk about this?
The committee added the red items on there, and struck some other items out, so in the next, or in the financial year-end update, if we want to make decisions about putting money into capital to fund any of these things, or use unexpended money to fund any of these things, at least they're officially on our list.
There are a couple of them that need addressed.
I, I would disagree, is that as a justification to adopt an interim plan, that I think we all sort of agree is an interim plan, that is subject to substantial revision the next couple of months. And I also have reservations, just having no idea what security enhancements for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars has to do with it. It's, it's sort of similar reservations I have to approving anything that I haven't had an opportunity to.
So, did you want, I do have a presentation to talk about some of these items, did you want greater detail on them before you vote? To put them on the plan, and to Mr. Parkin's point, we could also consider the security stuff, so that everyone is better informed before they make a decision?
Happy to do that, if we do a deeper dive into the security enhancements, we should go to executive session to do that.
Alright, did you want, I, I have the other.
Do you want to do the box first? I was gonna say facade, if people want more on that, we could do that in public.
Even show them the pictures, I think would be helpful.
Pretty quick, so.
Same time.
And so that, the facade restoration, seventy-two thousand dollars. You can see from the pictures what the facade looks like in different areas of the building. The color chart just shows the different colors, the product comes in, it's, again, seventy-two thousand dollars. Next slide, Jason, please. The quantities, the main roof has four thousand linear feet facade area, and then there's chimneys and, and knee walls for thirteen hundred additional linear feet. I love that picture with the rainbow, but again, you can still see the front of the school and see the damage there to the facade. But the restoration basically is power washing the existing facade, prep and install the surface sealer for the manufacturer, furnish and install top coats, provide a fifteen-year NDL manufacturer's warranty. So that is essentially the facade.
It's a proprietary product that only.
Of course.
Yes.
It's not number, regular stucco, unfortunately.
I don't know, Jason, did you wanna rifle through the bathrooms, just see different pictures? Again, um. Basically seventy-five to eighty thousand per large bathroom, those are just pictures of some of the bathrooms that we have. Again, very dated, and.
Is there a reason these two items were brought forward to be added, but not other items? I'm trying to understand priorities.
So the facade, yes, the, the reason the facade was brought forward, it was not on the capital plan, it was not discussed. Something that we identified about four months, two, three, four months ago. And again, did some investigating as to ways that it could be addressed, thinking that possibly it was just a, a surface issue that we could clean. But as we did more of a deep dive, we learned that there's moisture penetration that causes that discoloration. So that's why the urgency kinda jumped up, and that was brought before the board for consideration. The bathrooms is just something that's been talked about for a, a long time, so.
It's aesthetic more than functional at the moment, though.
The bathrooms?
No, the facade.
The facade.
No, the bathrooms, you said bathrooms, I asked whether the bathrooms are more aesthetic or functional.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, no, the, the bathrooms are all functioning, but again, yes, they're, they're dated, they're, we do have issues with constantly snaking them and keeping them going. They, you know, they do need restoration, but no, there's no urgency that there's, you know, they're non-functional.
Our hallway A bathrooms in worse shape than the rest of the school, is that why we targeted hallway A?
They're, they're some of the worst restrooms that we have, and that's why we put them on, they're also some of the most heavily used, so.
Okay.
Is, is there any element of sort of saving water, or sort of power, or anything that, that comes with that?
Yeah, so we're, we're pretty good in that we try to use, you know, low-flow fixtures already. So, there's small savings in the, in the amount of water usage. Not really much on the electrical, we, we've gone all LED in the building anyway, so everything was pretty much energy efficient.
In contrast, the facade is not, is more than aesthetic, right, it's actually kind of.
Yeah, the, the facade is something that if it's not addressed, could lead to further damage.
Alright, so do we wanna dive deeper into the security enhancements and understand those, if so?
I mean, is there gonna be an expectation that we're asked to fund it tonight?
With the wastewater?
Does that, that play a role in?
Yes.
Exactly.
We should talk about that, too.
Yeah, I would move that we go to executive session, inviting in, who needs to be here? Who, who, who needs to be a part of it?
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
Director of Finance and Operations and myself.
Superintendent, Director of Finance and Operations and Facilities Manager.
Okay.
Sounds right.
That was the motion I just made.
Head of school.
Head of school.
As well as, as well as the head of school?
If he wants to.
So we're here on executive session, under capital plan, for the purpose of security, I guess?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Was there a second?
I didn't hear a second yet.
I'll second.
Discussion all in favor, going to executive session with those people invited. Passes, her names, passes. Alright, so we're now in executive session as of seven forty-eight.
Gonna need to come back, Sarah.
Yes.
She's sneaking off now.
I'll come out.
I would take my bag.
Might warm up the car, that's.
That's the thing.
Losing track of my motion. I thought we had a motion on the Capitol Plan that's in the table.
As presented.
As presented, so I think we just need to vote on that once we get the reporting secretary back.
You know, I updated the MOO right when the legislation changed.
I knew you'd be there. I didn't come get the safe.
Because people were like, you guys are good.
Yeah, it's a great MOO. Yeah. It has a really nice graduate. It has like really, it's really good. Yeah, it's a, it's a really, it's a really good one.
I was trying to make sure it was on silent. It was.
Before.
Before he touched it.
Maury, go to the range to get the public.
Yeah, just outside or something.
Let's go.
All right, so we have a motion. We'll catch up, Sarah. She can watch the tape since we're live. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the Capitol Plan.
Trust me.
Well, would you like?
As presented.
The move was.
Do you have the motion?
Of move to adopt current Capitol Plan as presented.
Okay, so that was moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Just revisit my same reservations about the state of it being to interim and not being comfortable adopting it for that purpose, but it's been going.
All right.
Is Sarah coming back?
No, she's not. I'm sorry. He lost Sarah. She said she would watch from home.
Yeah, okay.
I asked her to throw me in the trunk, but she said no. She should've taken your bag. We all discussed that. You could see her from home.
That was a good moment. We will move on to item A two.
A one two B.
The financial year.
The certificates, I believe, you're kicking them in.
All right, financial year and update.
Okay, so we started talking about this last month's meeting, and we have an update for you. We'll start in the health insurance side, which is in blue, columns A and B. The health benefits reserve is 1,392,658. What's still encumbered in 270, 271 is 1,830,351 for a total pool of 3.2 million. We anticipate our June claims to be approximately 225,000. With contributions and fees, that's an addition, so we actually get back 7,800. And so our estimated expenses for June, 217,000, which leaves us in our health reserve, 1,175,458. You asked us at the end of last meeting to kind of reflect what the budget object summary or our unexpendable balance would be if we unencumbered the 1.8 million currently in the 270, 271. And so you can see that highlighted in column E two in yellow, which is approximately 2 million.
As of, as of today, it is slightly different than your budget object summary as some things have, have come in as final invoices.
So there are some expenditures that we need to make at the end of this month in various categories. These are detailed here. We talked a little bit about this at the last meeting in terms of planned retirement stipends, payouts, coaches. It's a nice problem to have when our athletic programs go deep into state tournaments and we're paying our coaches and so on to, to work a little bit longer. Plan substitutes, there's some minor, minor expenditures in for facilities for 8,120, which includes some belts and drives and some electricity added to the track shed. But really, so we can come back to that column. Really, the important conversation is what happens over in green. And we can start with the target. Last year, we started a reserve balance of 2.4 million. And if we added a target of 2.4 million, which is the same starting balance as you had last year, that means we would have to contribute 1,224,542 out of our remaining 2 million that you see over there in column E two.
Of which 1.8 was our dedicated 270, 271 to begin with.
Yes, right over there, right?
Correct.
So if I deselect some of these items, you can see that our remaining balance is 661,403 after putting all 1.2 million into the reserve. Now, if you didn't want to put all point, 1.2 million into the reserve, and let's say you wanted a more moderate health reserve, then this is where the sandbox can help you make some of those decisions. Let's say, for example, you wanted 2,200,000 or 2 million, or just 2 million flat. That means your target that you would transfer to the reserve would be 822,000. Now, here are some decisions that you've made in the past. You've fully funded the maximum contribution to the, to the capital fund, 2%, which would be 496,000. You've contributed money to pension in the past. I think last year you contributed $100,000 to pension. You may not need to contribute $100,000 to pension this year. I think you're in pretty good shape. We've put down a moderate 50,000. And you can see here the security that we've just talked about for 125,000, an additional $50,000 for the central office health reserve. Eastern and Reading have contributed $50,000 so far. So taking that down here, you see that we still have 340,175 left to spend. Here are some additional things that you see on that list. There's the portable press box, which we put in last year's budget, which we cut. If you selected that, that would bring the amount down to 319,000. If you wanted to fund a portion or three bathrooms this summer and you selected 180,000, that will bring it down to 139. We just talked about the facade for 72,000. We've talked about some various painting. If you walked around the building, you notice in different sections of each of the building, we're, you know, we're starting to need some, some touch-ups. And there's also, so if you selected the 50 and the terrazzo floor, there's some damage to, in the main A hallway that you can see some cracking. That would bring our balance down to 5,175. So really, what drives this conversation is J three, what you want as a health reserve target, and then these other areas that you could see here in the sandbox. We're happy to help drive that conversation with you.
All right, we'll open it up for discussion.
Is it reasonable to assume claims going forward to be between 220, roughly 225 a month or 225, 250 a month? So if I wanted to look at a reserve in terms of months, I would just multiply it by 250 and kind of get you there.
If you, if you, Sarah, if you pulled up on your computer the most recent health claim report, you should be able to see your 12-month average or three months average.
I'm trying to look forward in a conservative way.
Yeah.
I think May was a little higher, and so we plan June a little higher.
Like if you wanted nine months at 250, you'd be looking at two and a quarter million dollars in there, which seems unlikely to ever need.
The recommendation is usually four months, right?
Right.
Right now, we're at eight months. At too many?
Yeah, if you go to 2 million, yeah. You could be 1.5 and almost certainly be comfortable.
Again, we traditionally go a little higher. Sometimes we've gone way higher, but we traditionally go a little bit.
Right now, we're living a goofy higher. Like we're living over a year.
We've, we've been way higher than that. We usually don't go much lower than that just because of us having to go back to.
To the towns.
I'm with you. Not lower than 2 million, you mean? Or not lower than six months? Or six months would be 15, right? Or 1.5?
Yeah, that's heavy because our average isn't actually 250.
No, the average, the average.
We usually don't go below. In fact, I don't think we've even been close to six months.
Yeah, I agree. Like, I like, I like six, seven months, like.
Yeah, we're always higher up to, we've been like two years higher and so.
Because you have one catastrophic.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's for my cut.
A little bit of one of the.
250 would be comfort, would be very comfortable. The highest claims, the highest monthly claims this year was in March, and that was 269,65.
We're averaging more like 210 though.
And so we.
But we've traditionally had really low claims.
Really very low claims.
We have low claims. You're due to go the other way. And if you assume a 10% increase year over year to be conservative, you're looking at 230, 240 average next month, next year, which gets you into this range depending where you land in, land in months.
I'm, I'm anywhere between 17, like 1.75 and two.
Just remind me, Sarah, we projected our 270, 271 next year based on what per month?
I can tell you. And we're flat. We, we're just, we were flat. We just, we flat funded.
So we, we put in 1.8 million again?
Yes.
And so then.
Yeah.
And we'll expect about 600,000 in employee contributions again next year? Or 900,000?
900,000.
So that means our total program is 2.7 budgeted for next year.
Yeah.
So we, we were carrying 225 per month as it is. So if we hit 225 every month, we need $0 in reserve. So we would have to hit 450 per month to have a, a healthy reserve erode, which.
Region nine also carries the balance, and so they also receive interest on that, on that as well, that, that gets invested. And you often serve as the.
The lender.
As this, as the big brother to the uncle, perhaps?
I'm good still in the 175 to two range, I think.
Yeah, me too. Yeah. Do we, do we want to see what 170?
Sharpen from there in the following years, but.
Yep. Do we want to see what 175 looks like there? And then do we want to talk about these, these items?
Yeah, I would say place 175 in there and see what that leaves left and then see what priorities folks have. And the answer might be it ends up being two again because you don't want to spend another quarter million dollars on some of this stuff.
Exactly.
Right, there's a, Sarah wanted. Sarah wanted a box at the bottom.
Yep.
That says remaining funds to healthcare, so.
Because once you get to the bottom of the list, you're either saying, I'm returning money to town, or I'm putting it back to health insurance.
That's right.
All right, I put in.
More bathrooms or.
I put in 1.8. Okay, so that means you're, you would contribute 624,542 to the reserve, and then you see all of those projects listed there would be supported with 205,175.
So to be clear, this, this money, when does it have to be spent?
About 10 days.
Is there a timer on these?
Yes.
We gotta, we gotta invoice these.
This.
You gotta encumber it all before the fiscal year.
Work doesn't have to be done.
No, it just has to be.
And it's, it's very important for the, the towns that we close out earlier because there are both, because towns are looking at bonding projects, and so they must have an early, they must have an earlier closed date. That helps them.
So the 2%, so, so the 2% of the 24.8 million is optional? It's not really optional, is it? I mean.
We, we don't have to. It's just.
All of it's optional. You can take all of that and say return 2 million dollars to town.
But is this in pri, is this in a priority order from Jason and you guys? Is, have you, I guess, is this green list prioritized?
Yes. We, I mean, we can, you know, if you, if you wanted to make, if, if you were telling us that the target's 2.4, the same as you did last year, then we could only select one or two items on this menu.
And if it, towards the top?
Towards the top.
So, so Kathy, central, central office healthcare is currently overdrawn.
Does that 50, does that cover you?
And so 50,000 from each, from each district would cover central office at this time.
Okay, so would that be the number one priority because you're overdrawn?
We borrow, we borrow money from region nine, so we would end up waiting until July 1st and then refreshing our healthcare fund. But that would mean that at some point, we would be overdrawn again.
I mean, so given that, I would put that, I would put that number one because that seems like a, it's gonna happen. So.
I don't know why I care so much about paint.
Right here.
What does that 50,000 cover?
Half this room?
I just.
Not a lot.
The, the hallways of this school are depressing. I, I think it would be.
I disagree. I think a petopism is more big for me. It is quite.
Look at the cameras and say it again. You could easily triple that.
Fresher, cleaner. I mean, like this color, what you have when you turn towards the gym from the, from the front, like.
You could triple.
What, what, what did we get for the 50?
Yeah, what do we get for the 50? Thank you.
Again, I have to go through and, and walk with administration and figure out, you know, what areas we would target, and then I could, could get you that. Just, you know, fairness to me, it's, it's hard to like, if, if I had known we were gonna, wanted to paint the whole building, I'd have you price proposals and we'd have colors picked out. We'd all ready to go.
So where did that 50 come from? What was it? Just doing.
Just a round number.
Yeah. And was it an estimate to do A hallway and that's it, or?
Well, so I think the, the 50 was a general number based on being able to do a small area of the school. Kind of, you know, again, as a first step, you usually, when you want to start a new, you know, with a new way of doing things, you have to show what you can do with that. And when you can really freshen an area and kind of make it pow, and then you can come back to the board and say, you see this? We can do more of it. How much do you want to do and, and when do you want to do it?
Let me ask it a different way. If June 30th is coming up, what does the invoice look like for this job? Is this a, we're gonna buy a bunch of paint and have custodial staff painting all summer, or is this a outsourced to a vendor thing?
Outsourced to a vendor.
And so the, the invoice will say, paint as much as you can for 50,000? That's really what I'm kind of getting at.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, what area would you target? Where are you gonna get the most bang for your buck and like whatever? And, and like, to be clear, like the, the parts of the school where we have murals and we have like the, you know, like these, those are wonderful, just, you know.
Right. And, and that's why, that's one of those items that is on there because it's something we really would like to do in a, a new way. We would like to kind of, new direction we want to go into. But I haven't even said one word to Dr. Omer about this. So I, I don't even know. I mean, it would be unfair for me to say, oh, we're gonna paint the whole front for you and everything, and, and he may say to me, yeah, no, we really need to do this other wing. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm a little behind the eight ball on that one. It was just more, again, what would be a number that we could do a certain chunk that might be able to kind of have an impact?
Practical question. We approve 50,000, 100,000, whatever number for painting. And administration goes out, hires a painter, and it costs 82 to do the area that they've selected. What happens to the 18 grand?
The leftover funds? We would, that's why that remaining.
That's the green checkbox on the bottom, I guess, right?
You, you. So we'd have to direct up to 50 in painting, residual of 50 to health insurance to avoid it reverting or having to be returned.
You would identify all of these projects and then you would, you would have.
If we already had remaining funds to.
To go back to the health reserve.
Then anything left over from any of the projects would have to go.
You have to direct it revert, right?
Great.
So the biggest number on that green list is the 496. Is, where, what do we think about that number? Let's start there because.
Go brainer.
That's a big number.
Always do that.
So, so check that one.
Because that's the most.
So that's number one or two. Those both seem like we have critical expenditures. Pension, that's another big one. A fairly big number.
What's the?
Where's the 50 by us?
Yeah, well, somewhat, somewhat, but what was the recommendation? I don't remember the total number because we didn't.
So there.
Full of numbers. So 50 tops us up to where?
Hold on, let me.
Because it gets closer to the. Cause it's closer to the advisor's recommendation. Not that we have to go all the way there.
I think security-
Well, I, I think that they, they gave us one recommendation, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, during the budgeting process. And then because we were doing so well, they sort of backed that down a bit.
Yes.
So we are a hundred percent, we're over a hundred percent funded, correct, in pension?
Oh, really? Oh, I don't, I don't know that we've ever been a hundred percent funded over the last, I don't know, seventy years like that.
No, the, no, it's not, not the total, it's the obligation, it's not, the obligations. It's, we meet our obligations.
Okay, so it's, it's-
It's, I'm, I'm, right, we're still, we're very, we're very solving, yes.
Right. We didn't crack ninety, but we're very high, like eighty-seven, eighty-eight, yeah.
You put approximately a hundred thousand dollars in at the end of each year to top it off. In addition to what you budgeted and upgraded.
Well, what I'm hearing is the returns are so much better that we're not, this is probably an anomaly year, that at fifty, we're at a, still at a better per funding percentage than we ever have been by, from putting the hundred K every year for the last-
Yes.
Which begs the tea leaf question as to whether or not those returns will continue, in which case you put more in right now to get the benefit of those returns.
Ah, come on, like-
Get time to work.
Or we, or we pull more painting and, and might can keep more of the building.
So pension is a low, is a low priority? It sounds like, so-
It's not three or four.
So the security, I know we have questions. But is that, it's another big number. Is that three for, do people feel like that's a priority?
Of the other items on the list, yeah, three.
And is this list, it's not set in stone? For example, we could say STEM Academy, additional STEM Academy money. I'm, I'm not trying to muddy the waters.
As long as it can be encumbered or invoiced now. We, we can't say hire another teacher next year with this.
Right, okay. So the one-twenty-five, get, we do questions, but is, it's a big number. Does everybody feel that's a important? Then the next, another big number is the bathrooms, one-eighty. It's summer coming up. Do we feel like we would, is that a good timing to start phasing in bathrooms? In the context of a larger phased-in plan?
To be clear, if we encumbered this, it's the expectation of the towns that we would have them closed out more or less by the end of September.
More or less by the end of, by the end of August.
Okay. So the invoice, so even if we wanted to say, let's do twelve bathrooms, it's practically impossible to do it in the next two months regardless.
Is three bathrooms possible? Is that reasonable?
Again, it's, it's, it's still, it's still really tight, but, but I think-
Yes.
Awesome, do it, yeah.
And, and I like the model that you described with, with regard to my question on painting about, this is our ability to show with a sort of smaller scale thing, here's what we can do with it, get more buy-in and then, you know, spend a little bit more money over time.
Painting is something you could put in fifty to a hundred thousand dollars per year for five years. And identify sectors of the building, right? Like, we're talking about A hallway, B hallway, but then, what, what if we wanna do ten classrooms?
Right.
Right, the whole wing.
My, and I'm, I'm all, my hesitation around painting right now is ideally, there would be a, a plan for painting. Like a look and a feel and a, how does it, instead of just repainting it so it's not chipped, do we wanna have a, a visual theme? Like a design theme, not to be fancy, but do we wanna think about, is it gold and black? Is it blue and yellow? I don't, so my concern about painting is, I-
Is there a plan?
Is, do we want to have a, a design, a more designed and intentional plan around a look and feel for the school? That reinforces the-
Application of it, again, are we doing hallway, classroom?
Exactly, like, and, and that's right. And where do we, how do we want it to reinforce the culture and the feel and the other things that are important to the people who work in, are in this school a ton of hours a lot of the year?
Yeah, again, it's, it's something that's gonna take some, some work. Over, over the course of time, it has kind of evolved into more of, you know, hodgepodge where teachers do different things. And so, yes, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna take some work, you know, with the administration and some, some buy-in to create, you know, and develop that theme that you're talking about and what your kind of motif is gonna be and how you're gonna do it and, you know. It's just been kind of over the years where teachers will do a wall or they do a section and it's just kind of-
So what if we add one more bathroom? We, we remove painting-
Painting's still important, right? Just wait, wait, wait. If you put fifty thousand dollars in there, you're not getting a theme. You're just, you're painting a, a bare number of classrooms. You put two hundred thousand dollars in there, there's a theme, there's a, there's a designer, there's, you know, someone coming in with paint chips. And, and we, we can have conversations about different sectors. It all depends.
Like, what I'm hearing is lots of ideas that don't have any sort of cohesive, long-range idea.
That's right.
Which kind of gets back to the, the capital plan discussion and how we prioritize off of that. Because it's nice to have two million dollars, but then you're gonna turn around and say, where did all go? I painted over here and I bought something over here and I bought something over here. And I've got a capital plan that says that in twenty-four, twenty-five, I'm spending twenty thousand dollars on a, on a auditorium, um, floor, eighty-five thousand dollars from RTU. Twenty-four, twenty-five starts in two weeks. So why aren't we talking about some of the items that we just identified as being of a capital need that are within this range?
I agree, because I also, I'm grappling, for me, I would do the front facade. We know we have to do it, it sounds like you've planned, you know what you have to do. There's, it's, it needs to be done, there's damage that could occur. So we know we have to do it, let's do it. The terrazzo flooring in the main hallway, that may, you may wanna put a falcon in it, I don't know. So maybe that one is a longer-term thought that has more thinking around it. The, um, the bathrooms, John, you know, John was, made a point that maybe that requires some more planning. I don't, I don't know. Um, but back to Chris's point, what do we want? What are the, what are the things that we, we need to get done that, like the HVAC, the stuff that's on the capital plan?
There's six hundred thousand dollars in expenses on the twenty-four, twenty-five capital plan. And none of them are on this list. And so what, I don't wanna get in the habit of picking out nice-to-haves when we, in theory, have a plan that we should be operating off of.
Just, there's different philosophies happening here. La-, at the end of last year, I remember this board saying, we're not going to do those things because they're on the capital plan. We have to spend capital dollars. And now, and now it sounds like there's a different philosophy where we're, we're using end-of-year funds to fund the capital plan where you didn't do that last year. Last year's philosophy was to fund the health reserve as much as possible. So, um-
But I, I guess to that point, and I was, I can speak for that board too, is that, is that, um, you know, it's, it's because it's what's presented to us, right? So I'm just reacting to the list that's on here. So I'm assuming there's a need that administration's saying, oh, this is, there's a need. And we have to spend this money within three months, and this is the only thing we could feasibly do, so let's just put it on the list, right? So you could arguably, if I, none of this on the list, I'd be like, alright, let's put it all in the capital reserve. I mean, let's put it all in the two percent and, and pension and whatever, because that's what's presented. But it, I think, I think what my colleagues are trying to say is that it's good to have a holistic view. Because then otherwise, we will have a piecemeal looking building where, you know, the hallway A looks nice and bathrooms A, in hallway A look nice. But then, you know, that's gonna get old in five years, and that's, by that time, we're gonna have hallway C. And you're never gonna have a holistic look. And that's why we're kind of looking for, hey, what do we want, when?
I would rather add a million dollars to the capital plan for furniture fixtures and paint over a three-year period that renews the building than sort of try to piecemeal it-
As a part of these conversations each year, which we don't know that we're gonna be in this position next year to be able to have this conversation. I, I think we are revisiting the same theme again and again and again. And it's that we wanna be ready, aim, fire, as opposed to fire-ready, aim. And, you know, one of the ways that I think Dr. McKinnon helped us to get there with relation to the, the STEM stuff is, hey, the theme for STEM, and I think we're gonna be talking about it later, so maybe there's a whole nother thing there, but, is we wanna create flexibility. Any work that we're able to do now in the midterm is about creating flexibility, not creating the perfect STEM environment. Cause we haven't done the work yet. But if we wait until we have the perfect plan for that, we're never gonna do that work. Cause now is an opportunity where we have the funds, we have the will, we're ready to do it. So what can we do now to create flexibility? And I would say, you can, what can we do now to create flexibility? Get work done meaningful with relation to the bathrooms, with relation to the painting, with relation to any of the work that we're doing. And then what work on that list is, hey, we're actually painting ourselves into a corner if we do that work right now. So let's not do that right now because that does need a sort of more strategic plan and like a creative brief or whatever else. But we still have to do the creative brief. We have to do the work to say, what is our vision for what this school is and how it all fits together? But I think there are, there are some things that we can do with an eye towards how does this create flexibility, so-
If you could put more money into the capital reserve, I don't think you would be having this end-of-year conversation.
Exactly.
And I think, like, we appreciate that. We're just, we're maxing out the two percent into the reserve. And then you've got end-of-year funds that you've gotta make a decision about.
Mario and I did have a conversation about this and painting, and he did identify some areas that he thought would be, if the board wanted to go in this direction, that, um, that we could key up, that he felt would be, would be a priority, some priority areas. So if that is, um, while we did not pick out, we didn't really talk about paint colors.
He said anything but the paint.
We did say, we did, we did suggest that it would be anything but the Pepto Bismol. Um, and we, so we did, we did have that, yeah, I think he just said anything but salmon.
If you walk down the hallway, there are a lot of clashing garbage covers going on. We have burgundy tiles in some of the hallways. We have burgundy lockers.
So-
Burgundy walls.
Yes.
You have burgundy lockers that can't be used because somebody decided that four inches wide was a good idea.
What the fuck is this one?
I, I, like, just don't have lockers, just have hooks at that point.
As a, another thought here, trying to move us along, could we go like on the wastewater treatment plant membrane? Is that something that could be purchased before the end of the year? So seventy-six thousand comes out?
That's something that, again, we could, um, we could issue a purchase order for and, and would probably need to pay for in advance. That, that's an item that takes a year. I don't know if Jason even wanna put the slide up, but that's something that, um, it takes a year for it to come in. And again, it's-
Purchase it right now.
So as long as it's a larger item, it can be, it can be done on an accrual basis, but you cannot have more than-
And that's a proprietary thing from a vendor.
I, I think what we're talking about here is if we can spend that money, like several of the items on the list that we're talking about for, hey, we could spend this, you know, with the remaining funds, are capital projects?
Right, yes.
If we can sort of divert to the things we already know are capital projects that we already have a vision for, we already know what we're gonna buy, well then that creates, that, that money then still exists in the capital fund for us to be able to do these projects with more intent.
Yes.
We're still painting, we're still doing bathrooms, but not the capital budget.
This allows you to take the shovel-ready projects and commit to those.
Shovel-ready.
And say, between now and November, we can decide what we wanna do with paint. And say, great, we're gonna commit two hundred thousand dollars out of our existing million-dollar capital reserve to paint. And it'll go in the twenty-five, twenty-six bucket, and we'll do it starting in June.
Thanks.
Yeah, I like that.
Is that, is that rolling up?
Mm-hmm.
That's-
So-
So I, I, again, I would say, let's uncheck the fifty K for painting at this point.
And I agree a hundred percent, the paint needs work.
Yeah. To be clear, we need to think a little bit more, and we can do it again out of the two million that'll be in capital.
But the idea would be to replace the paint, the fifty thousand paint with something that's, you know, fifty thousand in the capital, that's shovel-ready.
I would go to the capital plan, everything with condition D seems to be of a higher priority than anything that is aesthetic.
So the wastewater treatment liner, we have to do that. It's a long lead time. If we, if we order it now, does that arrival date work for installation?
Yeah, can be installed at any time.
So that seems like something we should-
My question is not whether it's good enough for installation, but whether it's good enough to close the books on the year if it's a year-long lead time. And that's a sour question.
It, it is, we will have to, we'll have to separate some of the pieces of it, but yes.
Just to make sure the auditors are happy with this.
So then we would be able to, as long as we make the commitment, then we can substantiate the accrual. And then even though we don't get the, make the actual payment a year from now because the supply chain is terrible, it's okay because we've made the commitment.
Yes.
So is the, replace and upgrade the HVAC and install the RTU for the bandroom? Those are those, we, we must, we really need to do them and they're gonna have to happen. And we know enough to-
We do need to do them, they do need to happen, so, and again, um, those prices have been on there for a while. And we have had discussions at the last two or three meetings that we were gonna update all this. And, and kind of prioritize it and put it out in years and do all that stuff. And, and that work has not happened right now. And so, again, if the board gives me a little direction and says, Mike, make sure all these prices are totally current and put them in the year where you think they belong, or if that's work that the committee is gonna do together, that would be helpful to me moving forward so that I'm, I'm prepared for whatever it is you're looking for.
So is it the administration's position that the four items that are in the twenty-four, twenty-five year in the capital plan belong in twenty-four, twenty-five? Or some of those in the wrong year?
Can they move to this year is what you're saying?
Or beyond.
Those items are, those items are in, in that year, that's where they were put, again.
That wasn't the question.
I understand, I understand.
Can they move to a later year?
So, so you wanna know if, if I had a certain amount of money, would those be the first four items I would do?
That's a different question, but I would also be interested in that answer. But, but the question was, for example, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for flooring replacement is placed in twenty-four, twenty-five in a capital plan that was brought forward tonight, is that the appropriate year for it?
Cause either we're gonna spend two hundred and eighty thousand in unexpendited right now, or in July, we're gonna allocate two hundred and eighty thousand to do it. Or if it's not that high of a priority, we move it out to another year.
And just like there's, the two items with decondition are what concerned me. And those are the, the two HVAC issues. And are those end-of-life need to be replaced in the next twelve and a half months? Or are they just there because they've been there for years in that year?
That RTU thing, I feel like that's been the hardest work.
But, but, but we just had a review of this and we just adopted this with these years. So did we do it intentionally or did we do it because it's always been there?
I would say that the flooring plan, I don't know.
Again, I, I would, I would say that this plan is something that's been in existence predates my time in this position. And so it's just something that we've been working off of and using. If, again, if it's the direction of the board that he would like me to go through and-
Has the HVAC work been condition D for all those years also? Or has the condition been downgraded recently?
It's been that way for a long time.
I have very little faith in the conditions being meaningful then.
Well, again, there was somebody else in the role and those conditions were-
Right, but the current, the current administration and current committee approved this plan, whether it was originally drafted by somebody else or not. That's what was brought forward.
The committee and we brought forward additional items to add to the plan. The process again for putting them on the plan usually relates more to the fact that if you wanted to spend money out of the capital reserve, the items that you spend the money on need to have been on the capital plan. And so that's why you continually put items on the capital plan as they become aware so that it gives you the flexibility that you can fund them in either way.
So it sounds then as if there's no actual urgency around the HVAC for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so I shouldn't take it that they need to happen in the next twelve months, which is what the plan reflects to me. And we should go back to the sandbox and say, forget the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's not actually a priority. Cause it wasn't in the sandbox to begin with. I'm only raising it because it came to us as a condition D, twenty-four, twenty-five expense in the capital plan tonight.
If, if there was an urgency that I felt there was imminent failure in one of those items, I would bring it forward.
Cause we're, we're prioritizing a seventy-five thousand dollar facade improvement, but not the HVAC. So hopefully the HVAC is good enough to last us to twenty-five, twenty-six.
That's the assessment, yes.
I think some of these items, it's like the roof on your house. You know you need to replace it, and theoretically, it could stay on there until you replace it, right? So you've identified the RTU in the bandroom for eighty-five thousand dollars, and you've identified sometime between twenty-four and twenty-five- So you've identified the RTU in the band room for eighty-five thousand dollars and you've identified sometime between twenty-four and twenty-five to spend eighty-five thousand dollars. Before you go out and replace that RTU, you would get an updated price proposal. And you, we, we know we have the money in the capital reserve, maybe it's ninety-two thousand dollars. And at that point, it's on the plan, you have money in the reserve, you would fund that project. You're asking us to put that project in end of year funds as an example tonight because you're bringing, it's a good strategy. Let's look at our capital reserve and put them on end of year funds, can we check those things off? However, that eighty-five thousand is a placekeeper that I would imagine Mike is reasonably comfortable with that number. But you would have to spend that and commission that work within the next ten days and that's.
We also got here because we're looking at two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars of capital items that were added tonight and we're looking to fund tonight. So they raced to the very top of the list in the past three hours.
And, and the reason why you've added things to the capital plan in the past is because you don't wanna spend things on end of year money unless it's on the capital plan. And that's, and you can, you've all been here and that's just an operating, right? We can't spend anything to, so last year, I'll give you an example. Last year, we needed a tractor which was put in, a Kubota tractor that was put in our budget for next year. We decided we weren't gonna pay for the tractor out of the budget, um, we're going to put it in the capital plan. We put it in the capital plan in June and paid for the tractor out of end of year funds. We weren't, you all agreed, you weren't gonna pay for the tractor unless it was put on the capital plan. And so the tractor was in the budget, but was taken off the budget because we wanted to cut it. And was put in the capital plan to spend at, not till June, until, until we looked and we, and we had live sight on end of year funds.
That just sounds like semantic foolishness to me, but the, the question really is how we handle this two million dollars.
But I think this, this gets to the, the thing, this point we talked about earlier, which is the longer term inventory planning. And but, and that's, and I think we all agree, we will do that moving forward.
And before, before June thirtieth, so, I mean, do we wanna not do security enhancements because they, because they cut the line? Is that the, is that the feeling here?
We're talking about what the priorities are, and I'm being told they got something on here in condition D for years that has been listed on a, on a plan that is supposed to be addressed next year. And if the answer is that that's not accurate, then forget it. I'm all for doing the security improvements, I understand why they're here. I tend to disagree with the practice of it has to be on a capital plan thirty minutes before it can be approved by a board for it to be adopted. But we're here, I think there's absolute consensus around that, the question is what comes next?
Let me try this a different way for, for those who have, limit, less years of service, et cetera. Is the reason why we continue to have this capital plan discussion, and I'm only gonna give you a seven year view of it, I can't speak to it before that. But the seven year view of it is, is because we have this very same discussion, I've been part of the same discussion for seven years. And depending on the mix of people, you have different opinions. But ultimately, it's what Kathy identified, at, at least in the last seven years, we haven't been able to, for different reasons, time, money, changing people, haven't been able to gone through, go through this holistic, okay, things are gonna break down over the course of thirty years and let's look at all of it, knowing this is up, this is up next. And then that up next should be in the normal operating budget or the capital plan. And then if it doesn't make that current year list, you go to the list, the next, the next year's list and you add it on. So that we don't have to have this last minute throwing things on the list and then, you know, eight new people have to decide in two days what to do. Like, we have to get out of that, so this attempt to update this list isn't, is, we've tried this, we, we can do it again, but we could just keep trying, right? And, but that's the attempt, I think everybody has the same objective in mind. We're getting stuck on the mechanics of this spreadsheet or that spreadsheet or whatever. But I, I think we're all aligned, it just, we have to get, we have to kind of figure out, you know.
I agree, yeah, I agree with, with Cheryl's assessment, and I also think that we now have a team in place. We certainly have a director of finance and operations who is in a very different place than anyone we have had in the twenty years that I have been watching that job operate. And I think we are now finally in a place where we can do this inventory and get to the right place and look at everything holistically. I mean, the, I can't even.
And I would say I have.
With our previous experiences. And we have, and we have a facility manager who, who takes responsibility and isn't afraid to come and tell us that something is broken. We don't have to find out because the building inspector calls and says, why is there a furnace on the sidewalk of Redding Elementary School that I didn't know about? You know, so we're, we're in a place where we can move forward in a good way. But for tonight, I, I don't know if, if complaining about the way that we put things on the thing, you know, we're, we're, we've identified that we're gonna have a meeting in August and we're gonna do this. And so tonight, like, okay, yeah, this, I think we need to move forward tonight.
I mean, my.
It's, what's, what are the priorities? The administration sandbox, the board's capital plan, some combination of the two, that's really the question, what percolates at the top?
I mean, my, my personal thinking about this, given where we are today and with the desire to move forward and, and we've got good, good ideas going forward to how we wanna address this. For tonight, my strategy personally would be, what on the capital plan do we want to be, get done? Because it either, it needs to be done in the near future. And it is, doesn't require extensive planning and it's not part of a bigger whole. For example, and I don't know the answer to some of those things. The replace and regrade HVAC, it seems like it's, it's listed as a D, it's been on the list for a long time. We can put it off, we can do it in twenty-twenty-four, or we can say, we have funds that we need to use now. What do we wanna, what do we wanna get done? That, is, is that possible to do that, invoice it within the timing and do we want to do that?
What was your example, Kathy?
The HVAC.
And I think what you just said is exactly right because it, there's a realistic, of, of a project like that of whether you're.
They have to be shovel-ready at that time of year.
And I don't know if it's shovel, is that even shovel-ready? I don't know.
And, and we would have.
Is that turnkey?
That's just for the removal of the old one.
Okay, so which projects on there are turnkey because we don't, I don't know, so it's hard to decide and prioritize. Or it, I don't know if anyone else has that same.
I do. I think that's spot on. Yeah.
Mike, do you know which projects there you've got confident data in that are shovel-ready?
So go back to the sandbox and let me see if I can explain just a little, little further. Okay, so you look at the items on that, I'm not gonna address the press box because that was something that was on there before. The bathrooms are on there because bathrooms are something that, again, we've talked about for years about updating the bathrooms. It's something that can be done again over the summer. Bathrooms are not like painting the whole building, you're not gonna be able to redo all the bathrooms in the whole building all at once. So again, the thought process there was to give the board some options for consideration as to whether or not if you had unspent funds, would you wanna address bathrooms, which was already part of your capital plan, something that you wanted to do, that you could do, a certain portion of them and consider doing them out of, out of your funding. The point is, you know, I didn't go and look at whether there were rooftop units that I could replace. And something else we have to bear in mind, yes, we need to do this inventory, yes, we need to have this comprehensive plan and I will do that work. But we also have to remember that to Jason's example, just because your roof has twenty-year shingles on it, doesn't mean that after twenty years you have to replace it. And sometimes twenty years turns into thirty years and the thing still looks great. And you wake up one day and it's, all, all, all needs to be replaced. So things happen kind of differently and, and hopefully that's what I can do. And this role is, is based on my experience, I can kind of assess that and judge when things are starting to go. Some of the rooftop units, we, we've done repairs to as part of this controls project. We did a lot of work on, on the control system and on, on our cooling system and heating system this, this past year. And so we've done a lot of work there. It doesn't mean the old units don't need to be replaced, it just means that they're functioning now, it's keeping temperature, everything seems to be running. The bathrooms are working to, to the point, but again, it just seemed like it made sense to give you an option to do a certain part of the ba, um, of the building, do the bathrooms, kind of develop what you want them to look like and kind of, you know, make, make a, a little bit of an improvement. The facade, again, we talked about that, it was something that we thought would be more cosmetic in nature. We realized it's something that we should really address. Well, the terrazzo floor thing i- is not like trying to put a falcon in the center of the terrazzo floor. We have, we left, we left terrazzo flooring in certain hallways in the building because it's much easier to maintain than the VCT flooring. It's, it's a better product, it's, it's, but it's been there, you know, for thirty years. We had a minor earthquake in New Jersey and we had some small little cracks that were filled with epoxy that had been there for years. We had some movement on that floor, nothing structural, just movement that kind of shook it up. And we had some cracks open up and it kind of shifted and everything, and so it jumped up. I went to, um, the director of finance and looked at pursuing an insurance claim. But go figure, there's a fifty thousand dollar deductible on earthquake damage, so there's.
You know how much page you can get for that?
So there was no opportunity there, so I figured it's, it's something, it wasn't budgeted, it's not on the capital plan. It's, it's a repair at the end of the year and so I put it on the list.
Can I interrupt and just say a crazy idea that I have? Hypothetically speaking, if you were on this board, where would you put your money?
Can I say that question? This is what I would do. This would be faster. Okay, you've, you've, this target here is what got us thinking. If you go and look at J, column J three, that target last year was two point four, you lowered it to two, one point eight. I would suggest that it would be around two, right? Now, that may be a little bit high, but this is your first experiment of bringing it down significantly from what you've done in the past. And if you left it at that at two million and you went back to the capital plan and you identified the shovel-ready projects from the capital plan, which are really the wastewater treatment, um, membrane and the facade and the security treatment, and then you went back to the end of year. And if you lowered, again, if you, if you had the HBA target at two million, and then if you checked all of these boxes, it brings you down to negative fifty, it's negative seventy, right? So you're really close. If you uncheck the painting and the terrazzo floor, you're down to eight.
Or you reduce the pension, really.
Right, or you reduce, or you reduce the pension. And essentially, you're, you're right there. I mean, the reason why we put these things on the list is because we, they're all priorities, these things are all important. So I know, you know, labeling them one, two, three, four, but I don't think we need to do that if the target is two million. So if the pension was, the pension was, you know, thirty-five thousand.
Not three fifty million.
Not three fifty. And then, so now, now you're returning six, or really, the six goes back to the, uh.
Two million and six thousand.
Right, you could take the six thousand dollars and, and, and.
So here's another crazy idea we just heard from our superintendent.
And Mike was just gonna say the same thing.
Were you really?
Yes, I was.
I know you were. But just slower.
Just slower. Can I make something?
He was gonna land on the same thing.
We're gonna land on the same thing.
He was gonna land on the same thing.
Can we, can we put the six towards fixing the floor?
Sure, we could put that as eight and if there's not enough to fix the floor, I'll let you know.
And are, is everything on this list doable within our timeframe?
If it's a priority to do the floor, do the floor and take it out of pension or health insurance and don't, like, sort of try to.
Yeah, but recheck the floor, I would say recheck the floor and, and we have to make the. And take something else down ten thousand dollars.
Nine hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Right, exactly.
Right, one nine.
Okay, and maybe the alloy or not the threads, twenty-one thousand dollars or whatever. The press box, I mean, like, I keep thinking of that versus all the other things that, like the bathroom, that could be another bathroom or small bathroom. Like, I mean, again, no disrespect to our athletics department, but, I mean, we've already invested, you know, four point five million dollars. And we spent a lot of money on athletics over the last four or five years, so like, could be.
And that's the value of the stage.
Like, I mean, really, you know, to try to be fair, you know?
And, and I am, I am a really big advocate for, I feel like we spend a lot of money on the athletic programs, I love the field down there. The box is valuable, the box is, it, it's like, how do you actually connect all those families at home? How do you get the game footage, how do you get that? Cause you don't have the setup on the new field. So soccer's not playing on the new field, um, lacrosse isn't playing, or soccer's playing on the new field. If lacrosse is playing on the new field, like any team that's playing on the new field.
Field hockey.
They have a very different experience in terms of family and friends being able to watch their games, um, from home, which by the way, has been amazing. And they have a very different experience in be, being able to watch their own footage and improve based on the footage that they're seeing. So.
Is that something the boosters can raise money for?
Yeah, I mean, with all due respect.
Which, which boosters? Cause I'll be damned if soccer's gonna contribute to.
Soccer never paid for any of those enhanced porta potties that football paid for for many years and they used them.
Parody thing really bothers me on this one because, I mean, you know, we've, we, we, a prior board did not agree to, to let the booster club fund music and sound.
I changed the order for everything.
Yeah.
We could've done this last year for the stuff that we punted on and that's just not fair.
Yeah.
I mean, we could've put it in STEM, we could put it in like, you know, it's, you know, proportionally, I get it's eight hundred, it's a lot of students, but, you know, then they can get on the list like everybody else and, and robotics, I mean, robotics has to come here every year to beg for two thousand dollars and yet, okay, let's, it just, I mean, you know, it's, it's a matter of conviction at this point, it's not even the dollars, let's give that to somebody else, you know?
You're really close.
I, I, yeah, I would, I would support the press box and I completely understand Cheryl's point of view on this. And I've had an earful from my, the kids who I spend time with in an academic setting about that. But I, I would still support the, the press box.
At one nine five, we have twenty-nine thousand left?
Yeah, and in reality, that twenty-nine would go back to the reserve.
Sure.
Back around, if those, if there were, if the facade was seventy-eight, eleven, then seventy-two or something.
Or put it into pension.
If, and, and if I can, just on the press box and the video, it is so incredibly valuable for a kid to be able to watch themselves and reflect on that. And we're just getting to the point where the kids are actually doing that.
I, I think that Cheryl will tell you that the performing arts students would benefit from the upgrades over there too, which they were denied, so.
And the robotics kids, we could've given them, you know, thirty thousand dollars last year and they, so they don't have to come back every year. We could've funded a trip for the French class and the music class and not have them, you know, pay the admission every year. And we've been doing that for at least seven years, if not longer than that. I mean, and, and we already spent four point five million dollars on athletic program. The other students who don't participate in athletics can't use at all. I'm off my soapbox.
But we added auditorium enhancements onto the capital plan, so we're gonna do it.
So the one, so we moved two things from the cap, actually, we moved two or, we moved two or three, we moved bathrooms, wastewater treatment liner and the front facade, which were not.
And security.
And. And security, which were not on the original list.
Yes.
In the green column.
Yeah.
Is there any, I mean, does the, did the, you, did all of you guys have anything that you would shift? Because if we take out the press box, we have fifty thousand dollars.
And then you're back at two million target.
Is, and is there anything, so, well, and I guess you're right.
You've gone full circle there.
So I guess my question is to the administration, is there anything on the capital plan that you would want to shift on here for fifty thousand? And, and carry on.
Some, the Bismol paint.
Not so much the capital plan, cause I think the capital plan requires, um, the items that we've already removed, the, the rest perhaps aren't as shovel-ready.
Okay.
And so, um, I still think painting's important because I, I know that, well, what we could do is part of our website rollout with the complete facilities plan. We could, you know, we identify classrooms, how much per classroom, hallways, sectors, buildings. We could bring in a, you know, um, kind of a graphic designer and, and do a comprehensive plan. But I think there are some touch-ups that need to be made.
I mean, if you feel like there's places that need painting and it's, it's going to, it's, it's meaningful and it's not going to, I just, I don't wanna, I would prefer not to spend fifty thousand dollars in painting that's gonna be repainted in two years. For, but if you feel like, if you know you, like that, there's ten classrooms that are just really sad and you wanna. really sad and you wanna paint them a neutral color that's gonna work with pretty much anything, then that's, if you guys have that need, I would, I support that.
Yeah.
What I don't, what I wouldn't support is just kind of repaint some stuff.
Yeah, no, I understand.
In short term.
Yeah, and, and I, I don't think that was, you know, really the plan was just to repaint some stuff, just to paint it, it was kind of to get, get started. I mean, we're probably sitting in a space right now that could, could use paint job, some refreshment, you know? I, I don't know, last time, how long was I on the board, fourteen years here? And I don't think it's ever been painted, so, I mean...
I, I just, if you wanted to paint this library, that would be...
I think it would be amazing, you could really, you know, brighten up, but, but again, just an example, there, there are areas that could be addressed without, you know, doing a hallway that we're gonna, you know, box ourselves in that we're somehow gonna repaint, you know? I, I wouldn't support that myself to do something that I'm gonna have to redo.
Yeah.
Those paintings back here, then? Is that what we're saying?
Could put twenty-five thousand in painting for touch-ups? Would be non, that be, would that be something?
For twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, something like that.
Take the press box out.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I hear both, I'm, I'm sitting between both of you. And I, and I appreciate both of your points of view, truthfully, because they're both valid and they both have merit.
I just wrote painting the library.
I do think that from a, a, the perception of parents and people in the community, the press box could be kind of a, could be a painful poke, and I would prefer not to poke at this point if we don't have to. I don't, I, because I don't, I, I, I feel like there has been a big investment in athletics, and everybody's very supportive of that, and there has been discussion that other things have been sacrificed. And I think in the spirit of acknowledging that, the, I would remove the press box.
I, I can, I see where you're coming from, and I, I understand the sensitivity that you're talking about, and, and I was a stage manager in high school, so I never, I couldn't have even found my way to the football field at my high school. But I think that, and I fully support doing some major work on the auditorium beyond the stage floor, beyond the HVAC, it, it needs, it's, it's ready for a big overhaul. But I think that to the, to your point about painting, I don't wanna just, like, throw fifty grand at the auditorium right now because we have some money. I would absolutely support making that our next major priority of something that needs to be done, because I, and I think that if we're, if we put that on our website and we're public about it, that that's, so, if, if anybody agrees with me on that point, because I, I think that doing the, I, I think we need to communicate that that's, you know, that is a big priority, and I, I mean, I'd support bonding for, for, like, I'd support that level of a project for that space, because it's our auditorium. I mean, it's, it's supposed to be, it's a showplace, literally.
I'm honestly, we support bonding for the bathrooms, right? You know, I mean, like, uh, you know, interior, like, refresh, you know, key buildings.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it has to be, it has to be, you know, that they have to be opposed, and I think that it, we can absolutely, and we should, you know, that should be a, a big plan going forward, is, is what, what do we wanna get out of that auditorium? What, you know, what's, what's the end package we wanna end up with and how do we get there? And, and I'd support, you know, as, for FNO, I'd support starting that, like, as soon as we're done with the...
I think Cheryl's point is a good one, as much as there's this question about what should be responsibility of boosters versus district? What are must-haves and nice-to-haves? And if boosters come forward and you turn them down, what is the criteria for doing that, and what precedent does that set around other similar asks? Because I think Cheryl's point really here is, somebody came forward and said, "I wanna help you with this improvement," and the board said, "No, thank you," and made a similar nice-to-have improvement somewhere else without anybody even offering the money, and how that, that balances out. And it's not something we're gonna be able to solve tonight, but I think it's something that we need to be cognizant of going forward as to how we balance those needs.
Where's our sandbox at, Jason?
Oh, one hundred bucks, yeah, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Mary Lee's ready to make lotion.
Can we make this motion?
No, we snuck, we snuck painting up a little bit high when we took out the press box.
I think the painting, the...
I think painting the library...
I don't think we're on... Is that a portrait?
Yes. I know, I've, I've put it on the wall. We can, we can change that. I think Cheryl's just moving levers around.
Painting back out, you're at two million on, on the nose again.
So, are we leaving painting in or taking it out?
I think we moved some really good projects onto this list that were capital plan projects that are meaningful to every, every single person who uses this school. I think that in the spirit of moving forward with the commitment to ourselves and everyone else, that we're going to work on this inventory and try not to do this again, at least in the near future, I think this is a good place, and I will, I am willing to make a motion that we approve this allocation of unexpended funds as, as on this, as presented here.
With anything encumbered but unspent, going back to health insurance, I assume.
Yes.
If there needs to be some subsidiary, there's a motion.
With the number that we have now, with fifty thousand, or do we wanna bring our target back up to two million?
We didn't go back in.
Go back in anyway, so doesn't matter. Okay, let's do it. Second. I will second your motion.
So in the motion, we're including, anything that's residual there goes back into the...
That is not spent will go back into line.
HBA.
The J, the J three.
The HBA allocation, yeah.
Any further discussion? I know John wants the press box.
I'm gonna oppose it because of the, but it means, you know, that's, that's how the cookie crumbles, so.
Are we all fully objecting to the press box?
No, I mean, I think you have the votes without the press box, so go for it.
Or painting is off.
Painting is off and press box is off.
For now.
For now. Rough.
I feel like, I feel like the numbers, I think the boxes have changed since Kathy was speaking.
Okay.
So just to be clear, Kathy, what's on the screen is what your motion is, yes? No paint, no press?
I, that is what I believe was on the screen when I made the motion. I did not see anything change.
So we're, soccer doesn't have twenty-one thousand dollars. I don't think lacrosse does, et cetera. Football probably has that kind of money, but they don't play on that field, so they don't need that. Right? They play on the big field that already has the media setup. There are grandparents who are not gonna be able to watch their kids, their grandkids play soccer next year, because we don't have that setup. And I'm not trying to make it about soccer, right? It's, it's like, it's sort of all this stuff going forward for many years. Maybe there's a way for them to do it under twenty-one thousand, and, you know, they, they gotta get to that work, right? They, they gotta get to figuring that out.
So this, this whole press box was not part of the NEST scope of work when the field was put in?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. The NEST committee would know.
Because it feels more like it's sort of that umbrella in the first instance, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that the full media setup, so the, the media...
It was never brought to our attention as a need.
The media setup has evolved significantly over the course of the last three, four years. So we are now in a place, you know, you watch the volleyball games, you know, you tune into the JV game to know when to leave your house for the varsity game, right? And it's remarkable, you know, and the cameras have gotten so much better, it used to be terrible. And now it's like, it's reliable, it works, it's expensive to, to sort of pay for the annual or the, the monthly subscription, but it's worth it, because you can sort of tune in, you can watch replays and all that stuff, but also sort of, parents and grandparents across the country. You know, as one example, I was calling my, my mom who lives in Washington State before every single game as we were on the way there, and she was, "Oh, I'm turning on, I'm getting on the, you know, I'm getting on the feed now." And I think that's really, really valuable. I think, I, I really, I take Cheryl's point, and I take what sort of Lynn said about, I completely agree, our next investment should absolutely be in that space. I think there, you know, I went to every showing of the, the musical this year, and I said, "These kids are extraordinarily talented, I think they're, they're having to compensate for a lack in sort of sound system, and they're kind of belting more than they should have to." And that affects the, the quality of the performance and, and sort of how they feel about themselves and all that stuff. We have some extraordinarily talented kids here who deserve a, a sort of setup that matches their skill level. I'm, I'm with that, but...
Do you have any sense of how, so the families pay for the subscription?
Families pay for the subscription.
And it's a live feed?
A live feed, yeah.
Do you have any sense of how many subscribers there are?
I, I don't. I would guess most families of varsity athletes are probably subscribing, and it's, what, twenty-five bucks a month?
Hundred dollars a year, so I don't know what...
Oh, really? I didn't see the yearly plan, I've been paying twenty-five bucks a month.
All right, well, John, you have sold me. I will, I will withdraw my second, and primarily because I, I think that it's not, if there was an, if there was something that we could, like, sub in for the arts that would be, you know, an apples-to-apples thing that would help right now, I would support that, or I would frankly support both, because, look, we have fifty thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars in our sandbox. But because you, you can't do one thing, I, I don't feel, this just feels a little bit punitive to me, so I will withdraw my second.
So to that, for the NEST committee, like, to John's, to the earlier question, can we use any, if we have, if we go under in the NEST, is there ability for us to use any access to fund the press box? I mean, I, I know we never listed it as an item, because we're never part of the bid, but it's still part of the project. Like, do we have that ability to do that?
Yes.
We, we do, right?
Feels like you could do it right now.
Yeah, like, that's, because I would have absolutely no reservation then if we did that, if we're able to fund it by the, you know, through the NEST funds.
Yeah, that's nice.
Because I, because I, I'm pretty confident that we'll be, you know, on target or slightly under, because we, we have bitten, right? And, you know, with Mike's, Mike and Sarah's diligence over the numbers, I feel really confident, right?
The whole, well, that's true.
To a certain extent, you, you're rearranging the deck to...
Yeah, I know, I know.
And it, it's, you can take the NEST money and pay for the, the, the press box, and I think that makes a certain measure of sense. And then, six months from now, when we're a hundred thousand dollars light on the NEST project, we're taking out of capital reserve a hundred instead of eighty. But, all that said, sort of, there's an optical piece of this, which is, we've set aside four and a half million dollars for the NEST, and now we've decided we need another twenty-one thousand dollars for that facility, which sort of seems silly, silly's not the right word, but a little bit off, when we also have other, other needs that weren't bonded for a year ago, basically.
But that wasn't in the scope of...
I, I assume without, I assume without knowing that we don't have capacity to basically allocate, for example, twenty thousand dollars as seed money to the Performing Arts Boosters Association or something like that.
No, I don't think we can.
No, it's not a funding thing, that was a kind of like a, we didn't approve, the board didn't approve letting them move forward to doing...
I'm, I'm wondering out loud about that sort of thing.
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's a mon, it's not a money thing, we kind of lost an opportunity to get this cabin sound equipment, and, and I, I don't, I, let's be clear, I don't, I don't wanna make this more, it's not just about performing arts, it's about funding something other than athletics, given we've put probably, I don't know, four, if, if you take the four point five million plus whatever prior boards put in place before that, we've been focusing on athletics for the last at least five years, and at the, at the expense of other things that we can fund. Performing arts is only one of them, and that's where it's, for me, then that optics, it becomes an optics thing. It's not that I don't wanna, John, your, your story was very moving, I, I, I get it, I agree with you, but it's like, why can't we find it from the four point five million, right? But, but I, I'll kind of, Gwen is withdrawing her second, I'm gonna beat Kathy's second then, and then we'll, you either get a no vote from me or no vote from John, I guess is the reality of it, which is fine, either way, I think we'll get the votes.
Asking here, Jason.
Can you put more sources to get to that academy?
You have to encumber it somehow.
Yeah, I don't think they've prepared to do that this...
They have work that's coming up in the summer.
Yeah, but it's not PO, like, it's, the scope is already planned.
You have to PO it.
Yeah.
I mean, you could prob, you could, we do have, we do have a, a project in mind over the summer, and you could take money out of next year and take part of the money out of this year and combine the POs, yep, theoretically you could.
Dr. McKinnon, in the capital plan, there was something for the band to relieve the pain, what is that?
HVAC.
HVAC.
That's the runk.
Can we do, can we do the stage?
Stage floor?
Yeah, or the stage.
Yeah, I found somebody who does that.
How old's he, was that what he does?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can the stage floor be accomplished? Yes.
That be done? Before the end of the year? Up shovel-ready?
Does it need it? Mike honestly doesn't really...
It's not that it has to, it has, he has to realistically be able to get a, a real quote that we can issue a PO for in the next ten, eighteen days.
I don't know that I can, can pull it off that quickly. And, and just, you know, for the history on this, on the stage, the stage floor is, is safe, it's in, it's in okay shape. What happened was, you know, over the years, there's been, you know, moves to improve it, and at one point, a laminate floor was put over the existing stage floor, but it wasn't really done the right way and captive around the outside, so it looked great for three or four years and then it all fell apart, and then it came off, and we kept saying it was gonna, you know, do a whole new stage floor, but we ended up sanding it and repiling it, and it was great for several more years. It's, it's kind of an all-purpose floor, where when we have a musical in there, we put scenery and things get fastened to it, and so, and then we have awards night, and we want it to look like, you know, Dr. McKinnon's living room, where it's pristine, and it's, it's, so it's, you know, we go back and forth, which is really hard, because we could redo it and make it look beautiful, and then someone like me goes in there and screws some scenery down, you know, big screws, so. It, it, it does need to be addressed at some point, but I would, my opinion would be, it's, it's not an imminent need right now. I'd rather see if you were gonna spend it, spend it on something else.
It might fold into the auditorium restoration.
Yeah, I mean, I would really strongly favor doing a big, big over.
Yeah.
All of the auditorium, which is terrible.
So the projects for the STEM Academy that you have right now, can any of those be funded with...
So right now, the board allocated a certain pool of money. Some of that Dr. McKinnon had presented to do a short-term project as the committee is, you know, created to develop that long-term vision, how that space will be used. So we do have a short-term project to kind of open up that one room and kind of make the space more accessible.
So is that one shovel-ready right now?
That one is gonna go this summer, yes.
It's already budgeted.
So...
I mean, you can pay it out of this, you're freeing up operating next year, and you're delaying till next year, you're using that sixty thousand dollars.
You can paint those rooms, and we include paint in whatever you're putting in. Painting near, that was there, STEM areas, I don't know.
I, I don't wanna paint, 'cause I don't wanna throw the motif, no, we can, we, we can paint in there. I think that's included as part of the project, is to clear them out and paint them and make them, you know, into a bigger space.
All right, so we have a motion that's been seconded by Cheryl, so, it's a list that's here.
We're back here.
So we're back here.
And so fifty thousand remains unspent out of this, which really makes the target two million off of this.
Put the two million back up.
Now, you did change it to painting the library as a specific painting project versus it was painting?
Right. And you, you motioned under the understanding it was just painting, not painting the library.
The library, oh, painted it.
The motion considered...
Well, I'm just clarifying because if painting the, painting the library is a very specific.
Mario and I had talked about that.
Painting project.
You could, you could say, "Paint the library" and allocate fifty thousand for it, knowing you're gonna use half of that and it all reverts back anyway.
So just make it painting again?
If, if we wanted to paint the library, that's.
Painting gives you flexibility. Yeah, revert it back to painting.
Back to painting? But it's still not checked.
Yes, it's still not checked. So are we checking it then?
Yes, check it.
Nope.
No, the motion has it unchecked.
Oh, so we, we have to revise the motion?
So somebody has to either make a motion to amend the main motion, or we have to defeat this motion, or adopt this motion, or they have to withdraw the motion.
So this is where the motion is right now.
So can I make an amendment to add painting back into the original motion?
Of course you can. You can make a motion to amend the main motion. She's just making the minutes a mess, but go ahead.
So you want to make a motion?
To stay specifically painting the library?
Yes.
No, just to include painting. Painting's not in the motion.
Right now, painting's not a part of it. If you want it to be included, then you would need to amend.
I mean, we could, we could just.
You can say.
What time's the library?
Yes, you could be specific.
Right, I don't think that was.
Yes, it was. I have more heart for painting the library.
Oh, I see.
Than just general painting, because I feel like that's a focused, contained project that is, has a, you know, a, it's, it's not one hallway or four classrooms. It's a self-contained space that lives on its own to some degree.
Right.
So I would, I will amend my motion to include painting the library. For fifty thousand dollars.
I was second. And you, was you one of second?
Cheryl. Cheryl already got the second.
Wait, so, okay.
So it's painting the library is added in.
In this amended motion, if we don't, if we have any excess from painting the library, if it doesn't cost fifty thousand dollars to paint this library, then the remainder would go to the H B A, right?
And anything on this list that doesn't cost what it is, it gets swept back into.
As opposed to general painting, really, probably it costs fifty thousand, that's what you have to, right, okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
I know. I know.
All right, so we're good, no more discussion, all right.
So I would just say, I'm sympathetic to the Press Box issue and I understand why it's important to certain constituencies. I just think, on balance, this gets us where we need to go for a variety of reasons.
I, I echo that as well.
Yep, same here.
There are probably other mechanisms, fundraising, et cetera, we can figure it out. We'll find a way. All right.
Yeah.
All in favor? All right. Opposed? And so it passes seven one. John is the upstate. They're sorry. All right. No, not an upstate. Okay. All right. Take more on to item B? Maybe even table a few other items.
I've got forty-five minutes on this for you, and thirteen slides.
It's a first reading.
So this is, this is very simple, this is, John made reference about six hours ago to the curriculum committee meeting, where there was a, a quality conversation about equity and grading policies and graduation requirements, the purpose of GPAs, grades, the whole nine yards. And the result of that conversation was the recommendation of the administration and the curriculum committee to amend the weighted grading policy, which currently provides for a one point zero grade point weight to As and Bs in honors and AP classes and extend that to As through Ds in honors and AP classes. For a variety of reasons, I provided a memo to the board last week before the policy committee met. The policy committee had an hour-long conversation amongst the three districts and ultimately ratified this and brought this recommendation forward. It's what you see on the screen in red line. It does exactly what I said it does, it changes B to D and it changes the numbers to reflect that one point oh grading being assigned on, on down. So the proposal is that the board accept for first reading the amendments to the weighted graded, grading policy, so that we can move forward with the expectation that next week, when we all get to do this again, and we are second reading the policies that were read at the tri-board, we can also second read this policy so that they can come into alignment going into next decade, I hear. So I will make a motion that the Ford, Region Nine Board of Education accept for a first reading the amendment to the weighted grading policy to extend weighted grades to grades A through D as presented.
Second.
Open it for discussion.
Thank you. We've been trying to do this for seven years, at least, if not more than that, so that's all I had to say.
I, I have, as a member of both the curriculum and the joint policy committee, I am in complete agreement of, with, with extending the weighted grades as outlined here. However, I, after reviewing all the schools around us and their weighted grading policies, either, Wilton doesn't weight grades, for example, everyone else does. I would, and I know there was, there's been discussion about bringing us into alignment with those other districts, one in different ways. Not to be identical, but to do that, I think this is a good step. I do feel that if we're going to change our weighted graded, grading policy, I would like to do it once. We do it once every twenty-four years. And I would, I would like to do it once. I would, if, if everybody is in agreement that this is the appropriate policy for the near and foreseeable future. But if we have, for example, some districts offer an A+, we don't. I, I, I support adding an A+ grade. I think a student who gets a hundred or is a ninety-nine or a ninety-eight, it should be recognized for that exemplary work. To, and it should be distinct from an A. So, for example, for me, that's a change I would make in the context of this policy. So I support this, but I don't want to go back in a few, in a year or six months or three years and, and revisit this again. I would like to do it once and do it the way we would, we feel it works the best. I also think they're operationally doing this with the timing, I, because Chris, if my understanding is correct, this would go into effect for the twenty-four, twenty-five year.
The goal will be to roll this into all the policies to become effective August one.
So August one, and I think this, unless this is operationally in place as to how we're gonna address parents and fam, kids who come back and say, is this retroactive? What, I would have chosen honors English, but I was afraid I'd get a C, so I didn't do it. And now my schedule is set and, and can I change? I think we need to really think between now and second reading, how those operational challenges will be addressed. I think we should bring Catherine, just, is it, his, just his, the new?
Of the new counseling?
I don't want to pronounce his name and correct her last name. I would bring Catherine into those discussions because she will be on the front lines of these parent calls and schedule changes or questions about weight transcripts. And I would ask that all those operational things be worked out between now and second reading and discussed because how is this gonna be communicated to families? I, I have a concern, and I'm, I support this. I have a concern that we rolled out APs after kids had selected their classes. We have done, you know, we, I don't want to repeat that pattern. I don't want to repeat that operational. Pat, like inefficiency. And those are my concerns, so.
I think we have a global and somewhat circular issue to tackle here, which is an overall philosophy around grading and, and curriculum and how they interrelate. Because I think we have a body of faculty that have very different viewpoints as to how grading ought to and does operate. And I think that creates its own sort of nested equity concern with respect to the course of study different kids take and what teachers they get assigned and how their schedules break out and whether same performance is getting the same weight basically across different, different sections and whether that even should be a goal. But to the extent that we are measuring kids based on GPA, that's a necessary output. And I am sympathetic to what I think is probably a minority of families and students who are going to have the concern, oh, I might have challenged myself with honors if I knew I was gonna make sure that I got that bump no matter what. I am more concerned about the kids who are going to challenge themselves regardless of the policy, but right now face an enormous penalty if they end up with a C+ instead of a B- because they push themselves into that AP or that, that honors class. And I am more on the mindset, and what I've heard from the administration repeatedly is, we want to encourage kids to challenge themselves and to grow. And this policy encourages kids to challenge and grow without this GPA cliff and concern that exists that might dissuade kids from pushing themselves in a way that we probably want to encourage.
Are we open to, I, I actually, I am in agreement about the A+, option. And I'm, I think when it comes to retroactive, we talked about it in the curriculum committee, and it was the consensus amongst the administrators as well as the committee members there, that it should not be retroactive. And I think the administration said, we're, we understand that we have to sort of stand up to anybody who comes, you know, asking for their two dollars. So I think, like, in, in terms of the, the sort of operationalization and sort of the, the work that the counseling department has to do and administration has to do, I completely agree, we should have a very clear action plan before second reading. And I would say, you know, if the only change in terms of the representation of what we see on the page there is an A+, are we opposed to adding an A+? Are we, are we generally opposed to A+ or is there a recommendation, I don't know if Dr. Kristen Uval or, or any of the administrators' presence have any context about A+ and why I shouldn't like that?
Yeah, I honestly would want to give it some additional thought and, and engage our department chairs in a conversation as well before I weigh in. I mean, that's, that's another significant change and I know we're only at the first reading. I don't know if Dr. Almeida feels, feels differently, but. We didn't discuss it in our curriculum meeting and honestly, we gave such thought to making this proposal that I would want to give adequate thought to that.
It's sort of an adjacent thing. And, and I would say, if, if it's the only thing that we would need to come and say, like, hey, we did do a poll, we said, like, this is a thing that we would want to change, I, I'm comfortable, I know you want to, let's get it done, let's get it done right. Let's let it be the, you know, law of the land for twenty-four years. But if it was the only thing that we needed to change here, I, I would be comfortable with going forward with this and saying, add the A+ later.
I, I'm sympathetic to the idea of trying to do this right, but I also recognize that this isn't gonna be the final right. There's gonna be an adjustment to this at some point as other issues evolve. And I think Cheryl's.
Do you mean between now and second reading or?
I mean, I mean, in the next, in the two, five, six-year horizon. And I think Cheryl's sort of visceral reaction to this says, this is a, this is a change that fixes things that we've wanted to do forever because we keep trying to be perfect. And because we can't be perfect, we stopped making, this incremental change, I think, is beneficial to a variety of students.
I mean, I don't, I don't, it's, it's very hard to be, I don't think there is perfect. I mean, it's very hard to be perfect. So I'm not saying that this will be perfect, but this is going to be, this, this is a communication. I personally don't think the timing is ideal for the start of the school year when everybody's, like, ideally, this would be in the fall so that everybody can plan and included in their planning and thinking. It's not a last-minute thing, it's right before school starts. So ideally, I don't think the timing is ideal. And I don't want to, and it's not gonna be without some, some discomfort for certain people and some, for some families possibly. I would prefer not to create another round of discomfort in a year because, for example, we all agree that an A+ is a good idea and a five doesn't work for a, now we're giving somebody a five point three three or whatever we're doing and now we're even above a five. And that's a whole nother discussion. Personally, I don't think, from a transcript standpoint, five versus four point three three matters for colleges. They all recalculate them anyway, they have to equalize them as best they can. I'm not hung up on that. But I do think the A+ is a, is a really, most of the schools around us offer A+, a lot of them do. I think it's a very nice recognition of kids who go above and beyond. And so if that's gonna throw a wrench into, well, now we're a five point three three and that, nobody, that doesn't really exist, so now we're tied in and we're redoing it all and we're recount, transcripts are looking like a mess for somebody who started as a freshman and now is a senior and we've done it within three years, I think that creates other problems.
There are five pluses. I think that's valuable. I think that the recommendation here is a simple recommendation from the administration, the curriculum committee and the policy committee at this point. And I think that if we were to introduce a, effectively a five point three now, without also tackling the underlying issue, we're creating a broader spectrum of possible problems in as much as, to the extent that there are teachers who might say, I just don't give A pluses. Or, I get, I've given one A+ in the past ten years and I only give three As. You've created this spectrum that is wider than already exists. And I want to make sure we have that addressed before we start expanding that, that rate.
I, I under, I understand. But I'm, that's my point of view.
Yeah, I, I also want to share on the operationalizing this, a concern about, you know, I, I'm okay with, you know, the, the changes in the policy. I'm concerned about the effective date of it and being able to communicate everything out to the families, guidance, being able to, for whatever kids want to make a change to the schedule, to take something now. Do they have an opportunity to do that before the start of the school year? And then also go back, are, are we going to retroactively go back and change people's grades? Or are we saying, no, it's as effective this year going forward?
Can I make a suggestion?
So to have all that done, we don't have to have that for first reading, but I'm concerned about that.
We, I can create a, a Google sheet that simply says, what are your questions? Here are your answers. And let's say you ask ten questions and we provide the answers to those ten questions prior to the second read. I, we can, I can tell you right now, the answer to one of the questions, what, is, if we rolled this out, we would communicate this to parents. And I was talking to Dr. Almeida today and he said that, that they would manually adjust those students who did not select a particular class because they were worried about getting a C versus a B. I think that's a very low percentage, I know, that's a, that's not really, that, that may not happen. But to answer your question, yes, we would communicate that to families and we would make that adjustment. And so if you asked ten other questions, we could give you the answers to those questions prior to, we may not be able to answer all of them.
No, that's okay.
But we can certainly answer those questions between now and.
I just want to be prepared for, for what the communication will look like because of how we position this is important and how we will address the questions because I think there's, there's a pretty, there's some pretty obvious questions that people will ask. I, I will say that part of my, part of my concern about this is, is similar to the discussion we just had about the capital plan and the inventory. And I, I would, I think it serves all of us well to get, to, to get into a habit and a pattern of being able to think longer and be more forward-thinking about things that are important and about everything. And I'm not comfortable with making policy changes or curriculum changes about things like this which affect everybody, college applications, course decisions, four-year planning in, in a, in a very short amount of time and in a timing that honestly, I don't feel is great for our families and our students. And I'm not, I, I know this has been an issue for years, like Cheryl's like, hooray. And I, and yes, I, I, that's true. But to have it now all of a sudden be a, this isn't an emergency situation. Yes, it needs to be addressed, but it doesn't have to be addressed in this kind of timeframe.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
Three years, I, we have kicked this can just on this one thing. We brought, you guys asked us to bring to you high school to that list. One of the ones that we keep hearing from students is not, what about this, what about, it is, so wait, you want me, you want me to have access to an honors AP to prepare me? However, if I get a C, I do not get recognized for completing that work. That was the ask you guys asked us to bring to you, that's what we brought to you. That was the ask you guys asked us to bring to you, that's what we brought to you, that one thing. And you're right, there, we consider there's gonna be layers and layers, but the one thing I don't want to forget, we're supposed to advocate for all our kids. We have a group of kids that are not, again, I don't think we're advocating equally because those kids, if you get a C, we, we don't have all A, B, A and B students. We have C students, we even have D students. But if a passing grade at Barlow's is D, that policy's been there. If the policy is you pass the class, any class, but not if you take an honors or AP because you don't get, it doesn't make sense.
It's punitive for that donut hole, too.
It's so punitive and I understand there's other layers, like I didn't think of the 5.5, but I think we're forgetting the big picture it was. We have kids, why would you want to take an honors, access to an honors AP? Cause if you can't get an A and B, you're not gonna get a high.
And nobody signs up expecting to get a C or D.
That is not my issue, I, I am 100% supportive of this and I agree with what you said. What I'm saying is ideally, this would have been brought to curriculum five months ago, six months ago.
It was brought five years ago.
Exactly, so when it's brought to the curriculum committee in June to be implemented in August, that's not good timing for anybody.
It's good timing for the kids who'll be punished next year before the change.
Yeah.
That's what it's good timing for.
And.
That's right.
And I would like, as the chair of the curriculum committee, um, I'm really trying to take, I think we, we did a sort of extraordinary, extraordinary effort to say, let's get all of our ideas out there and then let's prioritize this list. And this was, I think, the meeting immediately following that, hey, let's make the list, that the administration came back to us and said, this one. And, you know, I think that June 5th meeting is a really valuable, no, now you're going through the list.
It's the one we parent from kids. Like the communication, Todd, we, we could draw something, I, I'm not, is it, no, but we can get the word out. My concern is, the, the heat coming was that we still have not like addressed, that, that's my own thing.
There are kids tuned in on YouTube right now. Watching this, I know it.
And that's, and that's why I feel like we, we've done, some kids, a great service who are, because they're not gonna be, their C will be weighted or their B minus will be weighted. And that's, that's great. But what we didn't, but what this had, what this hasn't done is all the incoming freshmen, every other, every four classes now, didn't have an opportunity. To plan their coursework for the year 24, 25, or understanding this and neither did their families. And it may be a small number of kids, but I don't think that matters. It's still a small number of kids and maybe it's not as small as we think because I feel like I'm hearing two different things. One is we want to encourage kids to take harder classes and challenge themselves without this worrying about tanking their GPA. And on the other hand, we. We're, I know we have to start somewhere, I'll leave it at that.
Do this again, you know, maybe it's change the policy instead of kicking it down the road again, but looking at effective date of it, right? We changed the policy, uh, but don't kick it in until the following year to address that concern of family. Well, i- it's again to people that didn't sign up for classes right now and, you know, have this coming in and having to try to do it at the last minute. May not be able to get the classes because their schedule's already there.
I'd be willing to say that we go out and we say, we plan through this August 1st and if you want to change your classes, here's Dr. Almeida's cell phone, I think it'll ring twice. And those two people will be taken care of and all the students who get, get Cs and Ds and APs and honors classes next year won't be penalized. And, and if it rings more than three times, we pick it off a year because I don't think it's gonna happen.
I mean, there is no good, the reality is there is no good timing about this, like, you know, my visceral reaction aside, which I would still have a visceral reaction, is that, and, and this is not, and I, and I have no kid at Barlow, right? So I have absolutely no skin in the game other than doing my job as an elected person, right? So, but prior to this, I did have skin in the game, right, where I did have kids that were, you know, having that same discussion, their peers, and this is three kids now. And their peers in those same classes saying, there's, there's never a good time, right? Because if, even if we announce it in, in January so that people know, oh, now I can plan and pick more honors courses and challenge myself, whatever, you know what's gonna happen? The people that are in, seniors now that could benefit from this are gonna say, how come you didn't tell me? So there's always gonna be somebody that's not happy.
Yeah.
Because there's no good, the only way we'd have done this right is if we, at the dawn of the high school, we said, okay, let's do it. And that over time, that's not gonna, you, you always, it's always gonna have to adjust. And the fact that, I mean, it's a valid point and the, but it's always gonna have to flex, there's always gonna be something that's gonna change, there's always gonna be something. So while we would, I have the same aspirations as you, wanna keep it, change it once, not 24 years. The reality is education's gonna change within 24 years and we're gonna have to adjust and whoever is on the board is gonna have to adjust anyway.
All these policies create incentives and disincentives all over the place for everybody and they change. And I'm gonna guess that 24 years ago when this policy was adopted, we had vanishingly few advanced classes as opposed to straight line or honors. And the kids who take advanced classes get no benefit whatsoever except more work. And there are students who walk these halls and will, will say, why would you take advanced pre-calculus? You get no benefit for that, take a straight line class, it's easier and it'll be better for your, your GPA. So as we develop these questions about curriculum, I think the next version of this will address what classes are we actually offering today? Because this policy hasn't been touched in 24 years. Barlow doesn't look the same as it did 24 years ago, the curriculum study doesn't look the same. We've gotta start somewhere though and fix this punitive issue so that we can have that next conversation.
Just to clarify, the, 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 the timing of this, and I know it's, I know the timing's tough, right, for all the reasons that you mentioned. This came about because, uh, you know, we, we just moved through the policy, we just had a joint policy committee meeting and we essentially are repealing all of our policies except three to four, right? And so I started looking at those three or four policies that were the outliers and one of them was grading. And I started to collect information about what different districts around us are doing in, in terms of grading so we can be prepared to have this, right, this conversation. And I was just surprised, I wasn't aware that this donut hole kind of existed. And so the, that's, the timing came up during our, the conversation came up during our curriculum committee meeting. I, um, I know there are pros and cons to this. I think though, it, um, the benefits really outweigh the, outweigh the costs. That's, that's kind of where we have to make a decision sometimes, right? There's, there's more upside to this than potential downside and we'll just have to try to mitigate the downside. We just have to try to communicate, make some decisions, um, about, you know, and, and, and your questions will help us guide what the answers are. So some decisions we know, some questions, some answers we know tonight, uh, and there may be some questions we haven't thought about, we're happy to help.
Alright, so we do have a motion, it's been seconded. Any further discussion because again, it's just first reading?
Let's do it again next week.
Do it again next week on second reading? Alright, all in favor?
I'm on it.
And so Kerry's?
Sarah's gonna share with you a spreadsheet tonight.
Nice.
So you can start answering your questions then.
Fantastic, alright. Okay.
Oh boy.
Moving on to item C, which is table for now. Uh, item D, Nest Building Project Update.
Mike, is that in the presentation?
No, you have a, you have a.
It's not.
Please don't be all pessimist.
Four minutes ago.
I make my promotions on the.
We're hours now.
It's just one, oh, just circulating, we're just, we're just circulating, we're circulating, okay.
We have this.
I emailed it to everyone, I'm just, again, recirculating for anyone who didn't get a chance to glance at it. I apologize for the lateness of the email, but, um, this is again, um, what the board had requested. This is the proposal for design services for the forced main, which is the piping for the wastewater. For the Nest project, so, so this is, this gets you your pumping station, your, your, um. Piping layout, I'm gonna get there, let me, the pumping station, the, the piping and, um, the total system design. Not the project, just the design. So this gives you your first step to be able to get an engineer that will develop, um, that system, the design of that system. And that will help you move towards your next step to get a price for that system to be able to, um, weigh that versus the cost of the overall project. So this is again, um, and so the, the numbers is 16,000, 528 and 16 cents.
Impplied in there since there are suggestions that we authorize the use of some of the Nest money for this allocation? The underlying implication there?
Yes, that's what we're looking for.
Lucky to authorize the work.
Alright, so. We, we need a, a motion? Yes, a motion to approve this and pay for it out of Nest money.
So moved.
Second?
My only question is, uh, if this was available May 24th, why we waited a month to move forward with it?
It says May 24th is when the proposal was started, but it went through and then, um, I didn't receive it until May 24th. But I, I, I received it towards the, uh, beginning of June, so.
Questions, comments, discussion?
Seems like a no brainer.
Good, alright, all in favor of approving, uh, moving forward with this and paying for it out of capital funds? I'm not capital fund, sorry. Less funds.
Confuse me.
Okay, that was easy. Next one, item up, uh, formation of, so this is, uh, formation of STEM Building Project Special Committee. So, um, hopefully we can move through this one fairly quickly. So this was, we had it in discussion last meeting. So I, I, there are two parts to the STEM work and, you know, there's the part that needs to happen over the summer that we've already paid for. It's in the operating budget, um, and Jason's bringing up the picture of it there so we can talk about this project. So I think, um, part of it is, you know, again, does the board need to be involved in it or can the administration just go forward and do this portion of the work? And then there's the bigger portion of the work, um, which is all the other spaces not highlighted there. And, uh, we'd again, put money in operational funds for next year for doing some design work and some research and other things around that. So again, putting it up to the board, do we want to be involved in that portion of the work upfront with the requirements and that? Or again, allow the administration to do that and then once we actually, you know, have a design, do we form a building committee around it at that point? So, um, again, just opening it for a board conversational with the administration talk as well, but, um, you know, we don't have to form a committee. They can run with everything, we can bring in a committee whenever we want. I'm leaving that up to the board because I've heard from board members, some people want to be involved earlier, others have said they don't want to be involved until later. So I'm gonna put it to the board to decide. So I'll open it for discussion, I don't know if you wanted to add any other.
Oh, no, I see people who can.
From my perspective, um, I'm, I'm hoping to not do too many more of these. I think that the work that's been, that's going on over the summer, I think admin should, can certainly just run with that. I think in line with some of the conversations we've had and of doing things in a very purposeful way. Once we, um, you know, once we're deciding what we really want to do, I think a building committee, yeah, is probably a good idea unless administration has an objection to that. In the past, the purpose for having a building committee, uh, which was often, um, fields and facilities and, and then some other folks would be to bring in, um, somebody, for instance, who was not on F and O. Because this is gonna fall under the F and O umbrella. For instance, like, um, I don't know, somebody who is involved more in curriculum, but who might be valuable as a voting member in a project like this. And so that in the past has been why we have formed building committees, not to just form an administrative, this is another layer. Um, but so from my perspective, um, I think the stuff that is gonna be underway this summer, admin should probably just run with. But then when we want to start thinking about what are we really doing with this space going forward, I think that needs to be a pretty high level discussion to make sure that we're, we're doing something that's, um, that's really gonna be the best, the best thing for everybody. And that's my two cents.
Others?
To Gwen's comment, cause I, cause I think, you know, the process that Chris used for, and the, and you for policy, right, for the weighted grading, can't we do something similar for this? Meaning curriculum and F and O kind of, you know, look at their pieces of it and then it's, it's some subset of the eight of us anyway, right? So rather than create this ad hoc committee, we use the committees that we have to run through and opine on the detail of whatever it is they need to opine on, right? Cause these rooms have to make sense with the curriculum. But then it becomes a facilities thing, that we have money in the budget, et cetera, right? And then I think from what I remember, Jason said it would be helpful for the administration to get input from the board members, right? So the administration knows where to go, but at the same token, there are a few board members, I think myself and Chris were included, where like, we don't want to handcuff the administration from talking about decisions of what color paint we should paint a wall. So maybe we can use our existing committee structures to, so each subgroup can opine on their piece, I don't know.
I get, I completely understand what you're saying Cheryl and I think that, and I think the, the only thing that I'm seeing is that, because that basically means it's a board project. It means, it means all, all eight of us are working on it. And the only way that, the only reason that can get tricky is just because then you can have quorum issues. Whereas if you have four people who are in, more intensely involved and are gonna go to all the meetings. It becomes less of a, you have less potential issues of, of having to get.
Once you create a committee, you have a different quorum problem.
Well, yeah, but if you have, it's, it me, it obligates less folks to have to be intensely involved with the project if that's not their.
What Cheryl is describing is.
That's my point.
The curriculum committee sits and reviews the impact of this STEM project on curriculum and makes certain needs assessments based on that. And says, we want to run these courses, these courses are gonna require 20 feet by 30 feet of space and these three racks. And they say, dear F and O, here's what we need out of the physical space so that we can implement the curriculum. And F and O says, great, administration and board, here's what we need to allocate, here's how much it's gonna cost, here's what we're gonna execute, and it goes on. And then effectively, the way we're structured includes all eight of us in two phases. If we built out a special committee that, to use your description, was F and O plus somebody on curriculum, you've now created a majority of the board sitting on a committee. Which is its own kind of effectively sub-board because the three who don't sit on that become disenfranchised, like a veteran, because the decision's been made by the five, we're already a majority.
Just a, just a clarifying question, um, this, this building committee, the potential building committee we're discussing would manage the funds that were approved. In the, uh, 24, 25 budget, which was reconfiguring existing space in the shorter term. And there were some consulting fees and some monies around that, uh, developing curriculum. This committee would focus on just the renovations for the summer?
No.
It would be the bigger.
The bigger renovations that.
And a longer term, if this would be a longer term.
The summer one, we, we defer to the administration, so they'd be able to.
Sounds like consensus, yeah.
I think that what, um, a, a building committee could add to the project is, you know, a smaller group going around, there's a lot of schools around us that have facilities that we should, could take the opportunity to learn from what they've done. I think also there's experts in our community that we can call upon. So I do think there is some value to having a, a building.
And I, and I think, while I, I really love the idea of the committees can work together and sort of curriculum can send over the wall, hey, here's the stuff that we're thinking about. I think there's a, a sort of very iterative, um, sort of nature to getting this kind of stuff right and the sort of discussion and that, that sort of cycle of discussion that needs to happen between the, oh, here's the stuff we need, oh, but what about this? And okay, how about this and, and then those site visits and all that.
I, I'm in favor. And why is that being done by eight elected officials instead of eight administration? The iterative cycle of developing the curriculum and what, what needs to happen and how to benefit the students?
Not developing.
This feels a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I agree, stay at the right level, right, not developing the curriculum. Not, uh, you know, sort of going into CAD and designing, you know, new solutions for this space, right? And sort of designing the architecture of the space. But being responsible for sort of carrying that message and sort of, sort of, uh, the governance of that. So of creating transparency, making sure that we have the right collaboration that's occurring. And then ultimately making sure that we're driving towards certain performance goals, like that's the role of a board or a committee in any circumstances to drive the governance of it. And I think that. And I think that that governance is more fruitful if it's coordinated, you know, sort of, sort of more closely. I, I think the, the sort of over-the-wall process works really well in certain circumstances, but in this case, it's, it's a, it's a much more iterative process.
If the board's going to form a committee and the committee's going to have a roadshow where it goes and visits other things, there are giant FOI problems with that. And so you're better off not having a committee if two or three people want to go on a roadshow and report back.
Yeah, I, my proposal for that would be that you, you gain subject matter experts to give you, you know, or not board members or, or quorum driving members, to give you recommendations to sort of bring back the, the sort of detail. And if one or two people of that committee, if it's a committee by four or four people, if one or two people are going to go on a site visit and see a thing and then come back and report and say, hey, this is really good, or the chair of that committee is going to come back and report, that'll make sense to me. I agree, you can't just take the whole committee there without actually noticing the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. And I didn't mean to say that this is an FNO thing and we want one person from curriculum. To me, a good, for this particular project, because the building committees that I have been on before have been really building committees. We didn't need a lot of curriculum advice about the gym, we just had senteentlich. But I, I could see this committee, like to Karen's point, does have value and could be two and two, or could be three and one, it could be two and two, it could, whatever. Be three people who are just very interested in the project and want to get down in the mud.
And the subject, I agree, and the subject matter experts that you bring in, as well as, I think a representative from the administration, as well as a representative, you know, from the, from the teaching side.
Why doesn't the administration form a committee that includes a board member and three subject matter experts from the community and not be a board committee?
If you'd like to?
It's a, it's a partially rhetorical question. What you're describing could go either way, and I'm just wondering why the, the gravity of it says, let's form a formal board committee.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a part of it is the checkbox in that, well, that's what we've always done, you know, which, you know, I'm a big, big advocate for like, hey, don't do it just because you've always done it.
Yeah. I, I think, I don't know whether you need to make a decision tonight on this topic because we're going to kind of finish up this year a little bit, and then we're going to, this summer, turn our attention to next year. And we're eager to visit schools, start putting together a team, start collecting research and experts and data, and we could reach out to you at that point and ask who would like to be on our team. And, and we could see how that goes, right? And if you're comfortable with that, we can continue with Chris's idea. If you want more formal structure, then we can always develop a committee. Back to the short-term, long-term thing, at the beginning, during the budget process, I, I mentioned kind of a long-term strategy, a short-term strategy, and we broke out the one hundred and sixty thousand dollars into two buckets. But then you smartly kind of combine them into one bucket, and that was actually a really good idea, because essentially, if you look at this diagram here, this is really what we're talking about. We're talking about improving twenty-five percent of the space, short-term, and then coming up with a long-term plan for the seventy-five percent of the rest of the space, which obviously involves curriculum and course changes and so on. So we, we have a plan right now to essentially modify everything within this space, right? And we actually even have a number to talk to you about, a quote. However, in the last week and a half, we had some conversations with the administration and some faculty members, and we're, we're still playing around with what that would look like. For example, our initial plan was just to do this, and to take down these walls and move an electrical panel and so on, and to kind of open up this space. Here are some pictures, and, and make this space versatile. Whatever we do in this space is, you will be able to incorporate into a longer planned vision. So whatever we do short-term is not going to repeat something we want to do in the future, right? That's, that's really important. We're not going to install cabinetry in here that we rip out later. We're not going to install a different type of floor that we rip out later. But we do agree, like taking out your nineteen-seventy kitchen cabinets in your house, that's only a win. And that's, so we want to break down this wall. We did talk to Mr. Paola and the administration about the possibility of removing this wall and having a door here, and actually making this space and gaining a lot more space here. And everyone really loved that idea. However, you know, we're, and this is why we, this is why the, what Chris is explaining, forming a committee and then reporting back to the board as a structure, we need to be really agile on these types of decisions, because we've, we've determined just recently that this is a load-bearing wall. And that you would need a structural engineer and an additional hundred thousand dollars just to make this change.
No thanks.
And so we, we actually do need to be a little bit more flexible around this. So what I'd like to do with that one hundred and sixty thousand is actually, if you give us permission, autonomy, to, to put in reserve probably thirty percent, forty percent, maybe thirty percent of that fund for architectural fees, for a study, for the long-term vision, and give us the autonomy to spend up to a hundred and twenty out of the one sixty, or up to the hundred and thirty out of the one sixty, then we can make that space ready and usable for the beginning of the year. That's, that is part of a long-term project. But Mike, can you talk about the quote we received when we were just talking about removing the internal walls in H-101?
Yeah, so when we, when we looked at just removing the walls in H-101, we received the quote, and it is fifty-seven thousand, seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents.
Does that include the panel, Mike? No. Electrical panel?
That includes moving the electrical panel and taking down the partition walls. So I'm going to call Jason here, but these are block walls, but the, these walls here are partition walls, they're just metal studs and cheap rock. They would all come down. There's also, I don't have enough images up here, but there's also a wall that has the windows on it that separates the green room from what would be the broadcast room, and that wall would all come down as well. Yeah, that's the wall there. So that would all come down. So essentially clearing out that whole area, refitting those doors and re-weather stripping them and kind of repairing everything over there, clearing everything out, and then to Dr. Almeida's point, there's a, an electrical panel in there. And so we're, we're going to relocate that electrical panel to the outside wall so that it, that wall can come down, and that'll open up that whole, that area. But as Jason pointed out, the, the walls to the hallway are supporting the metal roof decking, so that would require structural engineering to be able to look at that.
So what is the, the door, is essentially the door still the same door? It just goes, sort of, it's in the corner and goes into the room? Or at one point, there was discussion about that wall, having sort of two, you know, sort of.
That's the structural wall.
Was that?
That's the structural bearing wall.
So you can't put doors in there?
Well, you could. You, you need to, you need to get an engineer to design and steel that.
You're not towing to put.
I'd like to put doors in, as the committee. No, but we, so we've got a price just to do the internal walls of fifty-seven thousand and seventy-nine dollars, and if we, you know, it, we, we could perhaps change the location of the door to your point, but that would cost a bit more money and we have to look at the cost benefit.
I was just curious about it.
No, but, and, and meeting with Mr. Paola and the administration, that idea about removing the hallway was like, we were really excited about that, because it would have been great.
It really would.
So it sounds like everybody's in agreement. Administration move forward the summer with that piece of rework within the parameters of the budget that's allocated, unless you need further guidance, because you were asking about.
Do we need a motion for the architecture?
You have operating dollars, do what you need to do.
Yeah, basically. Got all the dollars.
I don't want to give you the handcuffs, you need one.
Have you looked at H-two, H-four and the wall between H-two, H-four to turn that into a slightly bigger room? Or, I mean, a lot bigger room?
H-102 and?
No, H-two, H-four, they're two closets that are less than usable.
Down and left, the yellow box.
Yep. H-two, H-four. Essentially, there's a, there's a door that's on, that sort of goes into the hallway there on H-four.
These rooms?
And a door that goes into a different hall on H-two.
These rooms, yes.
Blocked off, then it's double doors.
We think that, we think that this hole, this, this space could be probably part of the long-term vision, right? Like, what, what would happen if we, like, we talked about this, what would happen if we, you know, took down these doors, these walls, right? But then an architect came in and said, well, ideally what you want to do is you want to take this wall out, but you need these small group spaces, and we've already taken the small group spaces there.
Yep, that's good. So back on the design mode.
I know, but it's exciting.
I know.
Nobody's showing me a design.
It's ten thirty.
So, yes, so administration move forward with the H-101 within the yellow box, funding's already there.
Motion.
No, nothing, nothing's needed for that. So back to the longer-term project, you know, a couple ideas, administration can run it and add a board member, board can form a committee. Again, we don't have to take any action this evening if people want to think about it more or.
Sounds like it's beneficial to let the administration cope over the summer and go back in August with what happened and didn't happen.
Yep, and give us a proposal. Tell us how it's going to, nobody wants to, nobody wants to cause administrative burden.
Yep.
Alright, alright, so we're good. So they need work and start, and then we'll revisit later.
Meetings always go so long.
Now we'll just form for the longer, bigger piece. Alright, very good. And now we'll move on to the next item, recognition of Assistant Superintendent Dr. Peterson Newell and Human Resources Manager Vicky Cram.
Someone wake her up.
YouTube has one viewer.
And it's not one of my relatives. Who are asleep.
Well, first, let's say a few words about Vicky Cram. Tonight we, I'm someone who has been a cornerstone of the ER nine community. Mrs. Vicky Cram, our dedicated human resources manager, has tirelessly served our students, staff, and board members with her exceptional commitment and grace. Vicky is renowned for incredible attention to detail, even when we're in three districts and noticing twelve bargaining contracts. You might think that some details become overlooked, however, Vicky's meticulous nature ensures that nothing slips through the cracks. Her ability to remember everyone's name and to greet each person with a warm, genuine smile speaks volumes about her dedication to fostering a welcoming and inclusive environment in Eastern Reading in Region Nine. Beyond her personal acumen, it is Vicky's warm relationship with teachers that has truly set her apart. She has a unique ability to connect with people on a personal level, making everyone feel valued and heard. And her open-door policy and empathetic listening have been a source of comfort and support for many of us. Vicky, your unwavering dedication, kindness, and professionalism have profoundly impacted our community, and we are grateful for your years of service and for the positive atmosphere that you help create every day in, in Region Nine. And we have a, a plaque that we would like to give to you from each of us and from the Region Nine Board, the East Board, the Panda Board, and we'd be happy to give that when we see you next. So thank you, Vicky, round of applause. And also, Dr. Peterson Newell is with heartfelt gratitude and deep sadness that we acknowledge the resignation of you as you move on and relocate your family to Florida. While we fully understand and support your decision, your departure will undoubtedly leave a significant void in our district, in our schools, and particularly at Central Office. Dr. Peterson Newell has been an invaluable asset to the community, bringing an unparalleled level of expertise, dedication, and warmth to her role. Her contributions have been instrumental in shaping the educational experiences of our students and in fostering a collaborative and supportive environment for all of our staff. Throughout your seventeen-year tenure in Eastern Reading in Region Nine, you've exemplified exceptional leadership and a commitment to educational excellence. Your innovative approach to curriculum development and your ability to build strong, meaningful relationships with colleagues have set a high standard for all of us. You've also been a beacon of inspiration, always willing to lend the air, offer guidance, and were tirelessly to ensure the success of our district. Please join us in expressing our heartfelt appreciation and best wishes to Dr. Peterson Newell, and we thank you for unwavering commitment and believing in a delvered law upon our district. Congratulations.
So I'll just take out this short twenty-page speech that I. Can you bring up the slide, don't you?
Lovely box.
I will say a few words. I have been here for seventeen years, so I, well, I will attempt to string some words together. I, I really believe that our schools are a very special place for children to learn and for teachers to teach, and I think they're special for lots of reasons. When I first discovered Reading, when I became the RES principal, I honestly, having lived in Weston for many years, had never driven north. And, and when I discovered the beautiful reservoir in the town of Reading, and ultimately Reading Elementary School, having worked in terrific, high-performing districts in Fairfield County, I thought, this is a really neat place, because this is a place where children are allowed to be children, where we really embrace childhood and we cherish it. And, and teachers are creative and they bring so much to learning. And then when I moved to Central Office, I had the opportunity to see a much wider breadth of certainly Easton as well as Reading, and our middle schools and our high school. And I stayed here for twelve years for the reasons that I described, because I think in all five buildings, we have tremendously talented and dedicated teachers. We have families that are so invested in education in, in our communities, and we have board members that put in countless hours. I mean, look at us. What madness is this? The high school graduations last night, it's ten thirty. But that is one, one of the many things that, that make our school communities as wonderful as they are. And I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen ups and downs and, and all arounds. And I will say that with Dr. McKinnon's leadership, I think that we are experiencing joy. And I think that joy is such an important part of learning. And so I thank my colleague Jason for, for bringing joy to the leadership of our schools and for helping us all remember why we do what we do every day, that this is all about children and their learning, and what we can bring to it, and how we can make that venture exciting and challenging, but also joyful. So I am grateful to all of you. It has been an honor, and I'm not going anywhere quite yet, because I have promised that I will continue to support the summer's need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member, if you would like to say something? Or again, on behalf of the board, I, you know, I think it is appropriate, we had you at graduation last night and then during one of our marathon meetings, it's going to be your last, so.
Thank you.
Can I just say something briefly? I promise to be brief. I was on the hiring page for Stephanie as principal of Reading Elementary School, and I thought, wow, we have an incredibly bright candidate here. I said, you know what, she's not going to stay in administration here for very long. She's going to go out, she's going to get this great, high-paying consulting job, and she stayed. And I'm grateful for it, and I think that there, I'm not in the minority on that, so thank you.
See, now we're in public comments.
Stephanie, right there?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was a fun summer.
That, right there.
It's a fun definition of fun.
I mean, heroic and I think you saved so many families, a significant, you know, amount of trauma that they otherwise would have been going through had you not been all over everything on that. I can never thank you enough for that, thank you for your partnership in that. I think we actually have three of the chairs.
Chairs at the time, right.
Three chairs at the time, you know, pandemic are right here with you and I think we can all say just thank you, thank you for your partnership in making that all reality when we were all going through it.
I'll echo what John had to say, which is that you stepped up during a very difficult time when you didn't have to. And you did that to the betterment and out of sort of a sense of duty, I think, to these districts and these students. And I think they all owe you a debt of gratitude for, for your work there. And I think it's fair to say that our schools are all different than they were seventeen years ago. And we have about seven hundred mandates that didn't exist seventeen years ago. And I think it's an underappreciated part of the, the work that you're forced to do every year, to keep up with all of those things, to keep our teachers on top of all those things and to do all the work that isn't glamorous and doesn't get a lot of accolades and headlines. But definitely needs to be appreciated. But, and if I can switch gears to Vicky for a second, if we're doing the.
Yes.
I, I think it's somewhat appropriate that we're here at ten thirty and talking about Vicky because, you know, she's probably in the office like watching this. I, I, I think she's really an unsung hero and the glue of this district in a lot of ways. I think a lot of what Jason said is absolutely true. I've had the benefit of long nights and early mornings with Vicky through negotiations, good, bad and ugly, over the course of my time on these boards. And her knowledge of contracts, people and how to get things done will not be replaced. And it's easy to say that about people are just irreplaceable and everything else. Vicky's different. Between institutional, institutional memory and interpersonal understanding, she will close contracts and hallways and things that you never knew were possible because she knows the right thing about the right person's brother who did, says to me three years ago. That's the kind of knowledge and, and impact that she has that I think has saved all three of our districts from grievances and arbitrations and other things that other districts go through all the time. And that includes various MOUs during COVID, we were arguing about who was going to remote learn this, that, the other thing, there was Vicky in the background making it all happen. And so I, I think she deserves to be fully appreciated and I think that, was it last year, Jason? That she was the recipient of the inaugural ER Spirit ER nine award or something to that effect? I, I certainly wouldn't be disappointed if we named that award after her going forward. It's a great idea.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, I made comments the last meeting with respect to Stephanie and your resiliency during COVID. That, that, this one thing that will continue to stand out for me personally and that was just unprecedented and, and so thank you for that. And I think I'll also add, and, and Vicky too, you, both you and Vicky, the consistency, the resiliency, the revolving door of leaders and board members during your tenures. And the one eighty here, one eighty there, one eighty here and the marathon meetings, not just Region Nine, but also Reading and Easton and having, doing it three times. And I said that already, if you remember what I said a year ago, having to deal with that in, with patience and grace, both of you, it's, it's, it's remarkable. And I am, I have a personal experience in my own work, being the staff, being management, reporting to a board and that's not easy to do. So really thank you and Vicky for your, your years of service, you're both irreplaceable and, you know, I wish you well personally with your, and your families moved to Florida. So best of luck and, and definitely keep in touch, you know, so.
Only YouTube video way.
Yeah, yes.
You have TV to watch every Tuesday.
And I'll, I'll just add in again, thank you both. And as everyone said, just the, a solid rock of our consistency through multiple superintendents, multiple board members, all through COVID, through negotiations. It's, you know, all, all these boards wouldn't have been functioning over the years and, and the students and faculty, you know, wouldn't be at the place we are today without your help and without Vicky's help. So thank you both and I think we should best of luck.
Thank you. Hope you get to enjoy your family more.
More family time.
Luckily it's soundest.
Yep, it's one last item because we're not going to let you out of here before eleven. So we have one more item to go. Which is the food services contract.
So that's my item, so it's definitely going to be after eleven.
No one's laughing.
So, so very quickly. Next slide. So we, um, no, that.
I did not win that.
So, so just a little historical view, in the past, the lunch program required subsidies from the operating budget to remain. What's that?
It was a little nod, yes.
No, it's a little summer theme, you know, I just figured. So anyway, you guys can, can read basically what's up there. Basically, we, we used to have difficulties with our lunch program, we used to have to subsidize it from our operating. We didn't really have, you know, a, a, a great, you know, um, a lot of usage of, of our services. And so we've been very fortunate, Chartwells has been really a great partner coming in. I think the first year they were here, the goal was that they wouldn't lose eighty seven thousand dollars, which is what happened the year before with the lunch program. And now we're to the point where we're actually making, you know, a lot of money each year in our lunch program. Part of it was helped greatly by the pandemic and we were able to encourage students to try the food and kind of see what we're offering. And part of it, I think, is due to Dave Kennedy, who's really our, our guru and, and does a lot to, to have really unique menu offerings. And does lots of, you know, vegan stuff and lots of really flavorful and different, you know, national, nationality type foods. So, so he, he really has been great. And so at the tri board meeting, we went through the other aspects of the food service program. But we needed to wait for the contract extension to be approved by the state. We have a contract with Chartwells and it's a series of one-year extensions that, that we have the option to do. The state is very clear that they vet through these proposals to make sure that there's no increase greater than the CPI. Which is what, you know, is their kind of parameter. So apologies, but they didn't get the, the contract to us back before the last tri board meeting. So we're doing this at the individual meetings. And so there's a motion for consideration to accept the one-year contract extension from Chartwells.
Where's the contract? Because the one that was circulated was the current year contract, not next year's.
Extend it.
I sent you the wrong contract? Okay, we have it, I'll, I'll send that.
I'm just curious what the increase is because I almost saw twenty-three, twenty-four was what was.
So I have down, go back to the last slide, Jason. I have, so CPM increases fees based on the four point six CPI index, the management fee increases by point zero zero four nine cents. And the administrative fee increases by point zero zero nine eight. But I will send you the full contract so you, you can see it's, and that's, I apologize, that's an oversight, I mean, I sent you the wrong year. I have them both in the same folder.
So have Easton and Reading approved this?
Yes.
And the joint operating committee, I assume, has made a recommendation around this?
Yes, and they actually saw the current one, so.
I was on a committee last time.
He recommended it based on the current one, they didn't see the current, the proposal?
They saw the, the current proposal, the right proposal, they didn't see the old one.
Is it possible to put the right one up on the board? Are, 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 is everyone comfortable if we see the right one right now, you put the right one up on the board and we scroll through it, are we comfortable approving tonight or people have reservations?
Let's put it this way, we only have one company who.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable approving extending this.
But it's also like the terms, there's not a.
There's a financial difference and understanding what the financial difference is, is relevant before we vote on something, right?
But, but there's not an endless number of sort of variables that we're looking at, so if we, if we could look at them.
Right, as long as this has been embedded contract, I'm not going to have a.
Yeah.
Could, could, it's just that. We don't have it.
The increase more or less than the current year increase?
More because the CPI was higher, so it's.
More than eight point two?
Do you want me to look?
No, it's okay, it's just making me very. Hang on, all right, how about?
This is all part of his eleven PM goal. Let's see some other pictures, Jason. Let's listen to the guitar, let's, where, where's Phoebe?
Phoebe again?
We really like Phoebe.
It was so good.
Yeah, I could listen to Phoebe.
It was so good.
Yeah. And then she wrote it herself, it's pretty amazing.
Seriously, it's just got to be on Spotify.
I'm leaving Tampa when I'm not back, so I'm going to trust the rest of my board to approve this and, you know, yeah.
Email?
But, yeah, definitely calls, I need to tear back here. Thank you guys. And I'm not ready.
When, do you need help? Stage yourself.
It is dark.
What would be to Sarah, what would be to Maria?
Don't play, you're watching.
Yeah.
The CPI is lower. It's green. Yay.
CPI is almost half.
Yeah. It, it is.
But the per unit increase is higher.
That's the per unit fee though. Right, that's the fee. The increase is.
Point zero four nine.
The CPI.
CPI is lower.
Lower. Yeah.
And they're getting twenty-two point three five cents a meal instead of twenty-one point, it's a penny.
Is this?
So I, I would make a motion that the Region Nine Board of Education accept the recommendation of the joint operations committee and administration and extend the food service management agreement with Compass Group USA for an additional one year.
Sure. Jason, go back to the slide.
Yeah, I see no further discussion, all in favor?
Yeah, that was the next slide. So. Again, very quickly, just, this is just a heads up, every year the. I told you it'd be after, no, every year we submit a, Dr. Wits to the state, they review our fiscal health. We have an excess in our operating budget, typically we use that to replace ovens, steam lines and items like that. So I just wanted to, in the past, there's been questions about how is it divided, is it divided evenly and everything? So I just wanted to show you that those are the items that we're going to be looking to replace this year and how we've divided them amongst the, the schools and the school districts. And again, addressing items that are end of life and need to be replaced. So I just wanted to share that with you so that if you see a new oven show up, everyone says, why didn't we know there was a new oven coming? So that those are the items that are there and then the last slide.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll move on then to. A public comment. Public. Board member.
Extremely briefly, thank you everybody for lovely graduations on my last night. And a special shout out to Easton first electman David Bindel Glass, who not only represented the town of Easton, but also gave on the fly, but the P E C advice during the procession.
Maybe say, you just forgot in a spill?
It's coming out of the health reserve.
It was almost like a home visit.
That's right. I do, I might need to get a second opinion though, because the guy I said today said it's definitely surgery.
All right, any other board member? Again, just thank you everyone for your graduation.
It was pressure, why you got to shower?
And everybody's here and Jackie, you're in, we're all the best. That, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Yes.